Okay, you're all set.
Representative Dykema, you don't have to unmute, but hello. All right, calling the meeting to order at 6:30 PM. The December 15, 2020, meeting of the Southborough Board of Selectmen. The entire board is present. And for some housekeeping, pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020, order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Law 38, Section 18, and the Governor's March 15, 2020, order imposing strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Southborough Board of Selectmen will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and/or parties with a right and a requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the Town of Southborough's website at www.southbrowtown.com. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to participate or watch in the meeting may do so in the following manner by finding the meeting at www.southbrowtown.com/remotemeetings. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so despite best efforts, we will post on Southborough's website an audio or video recording, transcript, or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. With that, welcome. Welcome, Senator Eldridge, welcome, Representative Dykema. And I'm going to get to the two of you in just one second, but our first order of business on the agenda is public comment. We do it both at the beginning of our meetings and at the end. So Vanessa, do we have any hands raised?
I do not see any.
Going once, going twice. All right. Senator and Representative, welcome. Thank you very much for being here. We really appreciate it. Just a couple of preliminary things, and then I think I'll start with you, Senator Eldridge, if that's okay?
Yes, absolutely.
All right. First, a thank you. You know, it's interesting, the various events and otherwise that we have in Southborough. I hope that other citizens of Massachusetts get the constituent service that we do. You all set a pretty high bar, and we thank you for that as well. The way I'd like to work it tonight, you might have seen the list that we sent. I suspect we're not going to get to all of those topics.
Yes.
But we wanted to impress you with how hard we're working and the number of different subjects we're trying to cover. But what I'd like to do is give each of you an opportunity to give us an update thoughts at the outset on what you think is important for us to know, what's going on at the State House, and what might be coming down the pike that might impact us. And then we will go around. I'm going to start with you, Lisa, when we actually go. And some of the topics that we sent out, I suspect that individual members of the board will touch base with you about, and hopefully we'll have a pretty robust conversation. I'll point out that in addition to the members of the Board of Selectmen, just for any number of reasons, and all of which make an awful lot of sense, I'm hoping also that our superintendent of schools is also going to be able to join us tonight. Obviously, what's going on with the schools affects everyone, impacts, you know, work, school, kids, families, et cetera. And so I'll give him the opportunity, if he is able to make it, to participate as well. So with that, as a little bit of a prologue, Senator Eldridge, the floor is yours.
Great. Well, thank you, Marty. Thank you to all the members of the Southborough Select Board and to Mark Purple and all those who are also listening. So thank you so much for inviting Representative Dykema and I. And I know that we gave an update, I think, early in the pandemic. Unfortunately, we're still in it, but definitely some bright signs with administering of the vaccine beginning yesterday. And yeah, as far as what's going on at the State House, you know, I will say that it's never been busier. While I might not have as many weekend events, you know, Monday through Friday is really packed, you know, mostly working from home. I go into Boston just one day a week where I'll go to my Marlboro District Office, but pretty much just working from home. And hopefully you've seen that the legislature is hard at work. So we did pass FY '21 budget. So this is the remainder after the 112 budgets we were passing. And, you know, I was very much expecting budget cuts and instead, you know, pretty much level funding in some social safety net areas like emergency food assistance, rental assistance, support for our public health departments, actually an increase. You know, about $500 million of the CARES Act is in the FY '21 budget. So there, you know, there's no more CARES Act funding. Hopefully, there'll be another stimulus, whether December or in the new year. But I think that's partly why we were able to do level funding for the budget. So the things that often I hear from, you know, Southborough constituents, you know, that means level funding for Chapter 70, for education aid, for unrestricted local aid, regional school transportation, since Southborough is part of a regional school district, special education, circuit breaker. So all those areas either have a slight increase or are level funded. So we're happy about that. The governor, you know, did either, you know, veto or send back some language, which we'll be dealing with, I think, next week, if not sooner. But that's a top priority. And then, you know, I would just say that, you know, there are a number of outstanding, in other words, remaining conference committees. So we have the Police Reform Bill where, you know, we passed it and the governor sent back some amendments, so those are being reviewed. And then we're waiting on the Clean Energy Bill, which I think is really critical. And Representative Dykema and I, you know, have worked on a number of issues, especially around solar, so really hoping that that will pass. The Economic Development Bill, which does include the reauthorization of the MassWorks bonding, so that's, you know, tens of millions of dollars given out every year to communities for MassWorks grants. So that's really critical. In the Economic Development Bill is the housing choice language, which I know is one of the questions. So, you know, basically, and I supported making it a lower threshold, a majority threshold, to allow, at least on the Senate side, multifamily housing, transit-oriented housing, and inclusionary zoning or inclusionary housing. So as I think, you know, I'm a big proponent of affordable housing, especially quite honestly in the suburbs. So that's something I'm focused on. And then we have the Transportation Bond Bill that, you know, again, it's bond money, but it's still critical to moving forward on public transit, you know, rail trails, roads and bridges. And then I think there is still a healthcare bill that deals with things like telehealth, mental health, healthcare costs. So that's still being negotiated as well. So I think the only thing I would finish with is that, because it was one of the questions is on the grant front, is that, you know, first of all, Carolyn and I are very veritable to, you know, work and advocate for grants. I know that Mark Purple is always, you know, keeping abreast of the different grant opportunities. You know, very quickly, just to run through some that Southborough has received, you know, over the past two years, you know, a MassDP municipal recycling grant that Southborough received, a stormwater grant that was received from the statewide Stormwater Coalition. There was money in the state budget for vulnerable populations, including for immigrants, and some of that money went to the Greater Worcester Community Foundation, which does serve Southborough. So that could mean that a family that's, you know, behind on the rent or, you know, needing more food assistance, that maybe the food pantry wasn't able to help, is that community foundation does have money available that serves Southborough. And the Shared Streets and Space Grant Program, I think from the fall, that Southborough received a $24,500 grant. DCD, Southborough received $204,000 for money to assist small businesses over the summer. So that's just a brief sense that there are state grants out there. You know, please be in touch with their offices. And I would just highlight that on the earmark front in the Transportation Bond Bill. And again, this is bond money, so that means that the governor still has to release the money, even if it becomes law, is that I did set aside $250,000 for every town in my district that has an MBTA station. So that could be for parking, that could be for improvements to the Southborough Train Station. I know that Representative Dykema did terrific work to make some improvements to the Southborough Train Station earlier this year, which is great, but I also know that parking has been an issue. So I did set aside a $250,000 earmark in the Transportation Bond Bill on the Senate side, and hopefully that will be in the final bond bill. And, you know, if that's something that Southborough wants to move forward with, you know, it's possible to get that money released, you know, by the governor. So that's sort of my update, because I know there's questions, I know there's not, you know, we can't answer all the questions, so really want to prioritize it to the board and obviously have my good friend and colleague, Representative Dykema, give her presentation. But thanks again for having me, I appreciate it.
That's terrific. And as a commuter into Boston, at least as of March 2020, and maybe hopefully sometime again in 2021, yeah, parking is a bit of an issue at the Southborough Train Station, so that's good to hear. Thanks, Senator Eldridge. Representative Dykema? The floor is now yours.
It's great to be here. I want to thank all of you, of course, for all your good work. I think the extent of the questions that you had posed to us truly give a flavor of the number and the breadth of issues that you're all working on, despite many of the challenges that we have getting together. But we've got this great technology, and it's just great to see everyone, good to see everyone's face. I want to thank my colleague Senator Eldridge. We, as you know, we work pretty closely together on behalf of the communities that we represent, including Southborough. And I just really appreciate his good work, and he gave a great overview of kind of budget to date. I thought I would start off talking about the budget for fiscal year '22. We are, as you know, in a little bit of a different budget situation than we have been in the past. Normally, when we're at this point in time, we would be fully looking forward to FY '22, knowing that the fiscal year '21 budget was well in our rearview mirror, when in fact this year, we were well behind schedule because of COVID with our fiscal year '21 budget. So we literally just passed that within the last couple of weeks, at the same time that we are now looking ahead to fiscal year '22. So ironically, we did have our consensus revenue hearing for fiscal year '22. And for those of you who may not have heard our presentations before, I know Chelsea, I think you are new to our legislative presentations, but as you know, the state budget is based on a budget estimate rather than, you know, having any kind of solid understanding of what the revenues are going to look like for the ongoing year. So at the beginning of the budget process, we have consensus revenue hearing, which really calls in a number of economists to give their projections as to what state budgets and revenues are going to look like over the next year, so that we can then build our budget from those numbers. The economists came in today, they spoke to about, for about four hours before the Chairs of Ways and Beans, and as a committee member, I sat in on that as well. And, you know, I guess the message from most folks was cautious optimism. I will say that the assumptions are always really important when you look at, you know, basing a budget on numbers. And what was clear was that there were two pretty critical assumptions that were built into or the budget figures are contingent on. One is obviously the success of the vaccine rollout program. As the Senator had mentioned, we've started that program yesterday. And for those of you who may have seen, the governor announced a framework through which the vaccines would be rolled out through the community, first dealing with first responders, obviously, and the folks that are working most directly in healthcare, in congregant care facilities, those highly vulnerable populations, obviously, and those in direct contact with COVID. They're looking at, I believe they said they would be into Phase Two by early spring, and therefore, you know, the general public would probably, hopefully, be seeing those vaccines sort of later, you know, into the late spring, early summer type timeframe. But that, obviously, that, all those details are continuing to emerge. And for those who are interested, we know there are going to be a lot of questions from people in the public who have a specific role or specific job, and they're wanting to know where they fall into the framework for vaccines. The administration has put together, and I understand it just went live on their website, a fairly comprehensive framework for laying out what roles and what phases they're in, as well as an email address where individuals can actually email into the Department of Public Health to find out what phase they're in. So I just want to encourage the public to take a look at that. And of course, our offices are always available for support if we can be supportive. So we are, again, we will be moving in. Hopefully, we will be on the same budget trajectory as we traditionally do, having a budget in July of this coming summer. But the other piece of this, which is the kind of the second contingency or assumption, is that there will be some more federal money coming from the federal government. And I think, you know, just looking at the tea leaves and hearing the chatter, I would say that's getting increasingly more likely, that, you know, while the conversations are still pretty wide-ranging, there's a lot of focus on supports for not only kind of unemployment and individuals, but also for communities and, you know, support for municipalities and state government as well. And I know that's incredibly important to all of you. I just want to speak, I know many of you may have seen Representative Congresswoman Clark, who has spoken in the public about her efforts to advocate for the municipal and the state funding to be included in the first round of stimulus, instead of having it divided into two parts, to actually include that in one big piece. I don't know how successful she will be, but I just wanted to make you aware that she is very actively pushing for that, knowing the needs of Southborough and other communities. I'm sure we can talk in greater detail about any aspects of the budget that you may have an interest in when we do the Q and A, but I will talk, just touch on a couple of other things. I know one of the questions was, and Senator Eldridge had mentioned, grants. He did a great retrospective kind of for Southborough and on what grants have been received. I thought I would just highlight a few more potential grant opportunities for the town that were in the budget that we most recently passed. The ones I'll highlight, there is a Behavioral Health Outreach Grant Opportunity, and I will preface all of this by saying that many of the processes and procedures for accessing these grants are still being worked on by the administration, because we just passed the budget. But again, this is sort of just to put this on your radar, and I'm more than happy to send a follow-up list of these, maybe to Mark after we get off the call tonight, so that you can have them on your radar. The second one, which I did forward some information on a few weeks ago, is the Local Rapid Recovery Planning Grant, which is not money, it is more technical assistance, but I think it's, you know, assisting with sort of downtown efforts that may be useful to the community as well. There is a Main Streets Economic Recovery Fund, Grant Fund for Small Businesses that is also, as I understand it, going to be a competitive grant program that will require an application. Very relevant, as I know that one of the questions that you had was about public health supports, which are clearly in great demand all across the Commonwealth. And there were two pretty important budget efforts in the budget we just passed related to that. One is a $10 million Public Health Grant for local public health departments. And my understanding is that all public health departments will get some of that funding, which is good news. I believe it's going to be based on population, although those details, I think, are still being worked out, but it clearly will be evenly distributed through all towns in the Commonwealth. The second piece is called SAFE. It's S-A-P-H-E, the SAFE legislation, which we passed this past year in the legislature, but actually funded with $1.7 million in funding through the budget that we just passed. That money is a competitive grant program, and it allows for a number of different, I guess, different aspects of public health that can be addressed through the program, one of which is, I believe, professional development and training. There's also kind of an emphasis on regionalization, if that's something that's possible. I know that especially for communities sort of in the size range of Southborough, it may actually be beneficial to look at regionalization opportunities, and hopefully that funding would provide at least some seed money to start doing that. The other thing, I know that, you know, small business and economic development invariably comes up in these conversations. Southborough is great about, you know, really working with the business community and recognizing what an important role they play. I would encourage you to look or kind of keep a constant eye on the MassDevelopment website. MassDevelopment has a specific page dedicated to their grant programs, which are, I would say, for the most part, are refunded every year. And so if there are kind of, they may prompt some thinking for the town about what types of economic development initiatives kind of mirror what the objectives are there, and there may be some opportunities there. So that was it for grants. The one thing I will quickly mention, and I can certainly talk about it in more detail if there's interest, is transportation. That's something I've been spending a lot of time on over the last two years, specifically the Alston-Brighton Viaduct Reconstruction Project, as well as the commuter rail schedules. So the Alston Viaduct Project, which I could probably talk to you about for years, the top line is that they are down to two potential designs for that project, which will continue to kind of move through the federal process. It's mostly federal-funded. The priorities from our delegation, and hopefully you saw a letter, I think I forwarded copies over to Mark earlier today, or my staff did, but we've been weighing in pretty repeatedly with some priorities from the Metro West Region, one of which is to maintain the current number of lanes on the Mass Turnpike, four lanes in each direction. There was a push by some folks who are lobbying for an all-adequate design, which would actually get rid of the viaduct and put everything at grade, to do that by eliminating one lane on the Mass Pike through that area. And our delegation was very, very aggressive in advocating that that not happen, knowing what that could mean for traffic. So I'm pleased to report that the Secretary did announce the other day that she will not be considering any plan that produces lanes on the Mass Turnpike, which is great news. I would say the one outstanding concern that I have, that we're continuing to work on, is relative to the train service. We did manage to get a commitment to minimize the number of, there was a post-track closure to close down one of the tracks on the commuter rail line for an extended period of time. They have guaranteed us that if that happens, it will only be for a very limited period of time. But there is one outstanding, one of the proposals would close down the Grand Junction, and without getting into too much detail, that's the bridge that goes over the Charles River into Somerville and Cambridge. That would significantly disrupt commuter rail service, because that is the connection that brings all of the trains over to the maintenance facility in Somerville. So if they close that for an extended period of time, we have found in the past, when they did that for a summer, it had pretty significant disruptions on the Worcester-Framingham Line. So we are making sure that they understand that. One of our challenges has been to kind of ensure that the commuter rail and the MBTA people are talking to the highway people, which they don't always do. So we've been really encouraging them to kind of get their ducks in a row and work together on that. So we'll continue to work on that, but hopefully a good news story for us at the end of the day, with construction slated at this point to begin in mid-2022 on that. The other key piece of that is mitigation. There will be lane closures during construction, which hopefully will be during periods when people don't use the road that frequently in the evening, for example, or, you know, late at night. But there will be significant commuter impacts, and we're lobbying, and we got some commitments relative to mitigation as well, which is good news for us. The other piece is the commuter rail schedules, which some of you have may seen, there were some reductions in schedules proposed. And while we were not successful in turning back all of those proposed cuts, what we did do is we got them to add back in some weekend service, which was good news. They had proposed to eliminate that entirely, at least, you know, for the next number of months. They're also looking at adding back some after 9:00 PM service, which they had proposed to eliminate entirely. So on that front, there will be another check-in on commuter rail service in the spring, early spring, to see where we are and see, you know, at what point we can wrap, you know, ramp service back up to where it was pre-COVID. So I guess I will leave it there, and certainly I join the Senator in welcoming and entertaining any questions.
Okay, and now to my fellow board members. I want to get the Senator and the Representative out of here at somewhat of a reasonable hour. So what I'd ask is maybe just a couple of areas for each of us to touch upon, I mean, and just these introductory remarks have touched upon a lot of them. So thanks for that. And with that caveat, Ms. Brascio?
Thank you.
Fire away.
Great, thank you. Good evening, Representative Dykema and Senator Eldridge. Thank you for coming. These updates are always so informative and so helpful to the citizens, so we greatly appreciate your continued support of Southborough and all that you do. You did touch on a couple that I had. One of the most important one was the updates on the Alston. So thank you, Carolyn, for that and how the town could be affected. I am actually, a lot of, there was a lot of overlap on some of my questions, so I'm actually just going to stick to a couple that I was asked at the Dul Men's Club here in Southborough last Friday. So I will limit my two or three questions to that. I would love to be able to go back to them. There was a resident that, his property is right on the reservoir, and years ago, I guess, they were able to kind of keep it cleaned up and everything, and directors and whatnot changed within DCR. So now it's kind of become very untidy, it's overgrown, and they'd like to be able to have conversations again, or a pathway to be able to kind of clear away some of the overbrush and everything that's in your, you know, kind of in their area. They haven't been very successful, you know, in finding that path. So I'm hoping maybe through one or both of your offices, you know, that that's something that, you know, we can certainly work out. So that's number one. So I don't know if you have any thoughts on that, or?
Yeah, we can, we can work on that. And, you know, I think DCR has become more of a responsive agency, though sometimes challenging. And I give, you know, the governor credit to, you know, to keeping DCR parks open and, you know, given that people need to get outdoors these days. But yeah, happy to work with Representative Dykema to reach out to DCR.
If I could just jump on quickly, Lisa, I think I know exactly who that is. Because we have worked pretty extensively with the town, and I will not name names.
Yeah.
But I'm sure he knows, I know who he is. And so we're happy to revisit that again. I do think there have been potentially some changes over DCR that need to take that conversation, so it might, you know, we'll take another look at that and we'll connect with you offline to follow up.
That would be great. And yes, you are correct, because he did, he did say that he has spoken to you about it prior. So that one was easy, thank you very much. And then, interestingly enough, I had a senior that would like to know your thoughts on the election process. This was a very different election than it has been in the past, and he just wanted to know your thoughts on how overall you thought the process worked, and even maybe safe from fraud, you know, from a state standpoint, so.
Yeah, I think it went well, and, you know, we made some changes to make it easier for people to vote, but, you know, people could track their vote, they could, you know, vote early, vote by mail. And, you know, I certainly haven't heard of, you know, any proven instance of fraud in Massachusetts, and certainly the, a lot of the hearings in other states, there doesn't seem to be any evidence of that either. So, yeah, so I think it's worked well, and it was great to see so many more people get out and vote this year. So I feel confident about it.
Great. Carolyn, if you have any thoughts on that either?
You know, I would just say, obviously, in Southborough with Jim Hegarty and his team in the clerk's office, you know that you've got no one better to run an election that is, you know, top-notch. And he did, and I think the great thing about Massachusetts is that in our communities, we know our, you know, town clerks, our city clerks, we know the people that are, you know, organizing these things, and I think they're all really capable, qualified people. And I think the fact that we have seen no news or anything of any kind of fraud is a testament to the great work they do. So I agree with Senator.
Okay, great. And lastly, I'm sure, Carolyn, that you've been asked this question before again, but And and lastly, I'm sure, Carolyn, that you've been asked this question before again, but I I had promised that I would ask. So do you have any guidance or updates on OPEB or unfunded pensions from a state level? And something maybe, any guidance to thought process to what maybe here in Southborough we could be doing differently?
And I don't have much on OPEB or pensions other than, you know, towns are continuing to have to, you know, meet the guidelines. But Carolyn, I don't know if you have anything on that.
No, I guess, you know, I know it's, I know it's a concern and it's been raised by folks. We have the same concern at the state level with our state level retirement funding, you know, how we do that. And we're all, I'd say we're all a little bit behind schedule, communities as well as the state in doing that. The state, through our state budget, has been pretty rigorous in putting additional funds into paying down our, you know, retirement obligations. And I know a lot of communities are doing the same. So I think, you know, that question is really just one of like, you know, buckling down and and putting inside the funds when we can. Obviously, in tough financial times, that's harder to do. But in good times, hopefully, we can make some progress on that.
Great, that's that's wonderful. Thank you for asking the questions. I'm sure some of them are watching and otherwise they'll hear about it anyway. So again, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thanks. All right, thanks. Thanks, Lisa. And now I think, Carolyn, you might have mentioned it, are the newest member of the board, Ms. Malinowski. Chelsea?
Thank you. It's nice to meet you both and thank you very much for your update and everything that you've done for the town of Southborough. I do have two questions. One's a follow-up to something that you had said, Carolyn, on the regionalization. Is that for startup of a regionalization for the host community? Or do you know any specifics around that?
The, all of the guidelines around that should be coming out when they release the the application for the funding. There is a, if you look at the legislation, actually, there's kind of a framework for what the final program needs to consider and comply with. So I would say at this point, that's probably the best guidance in terms of what might be possible. So when I send over and I'll coordinate with the Senator to kind of get these resources together and I'll send over a draft of, or the final copy of the legislation so you can see the the legal language.
Great, thank you. And my second question is around support for vaccine distribution for towns in cities, kind of outside of, you know, phase one. But actually, have have you gotten any information about what kind of support the state will be giving towns around distribution?
So, go ahead, Senator.
No, I mean, there's, and I can, you know, there's a, there's a website that lists the the phases, which I, you know, I I think means that, you know, if there's a long-term care facility in Southborough, then then it's getting that in phase one. Do you do you mean some separate distribution at a town level or?
Right, so for residents, like if we were to have vaccines distributed for residents, is the state going to provide some guidance on how to do that?
So my understanding, and I'll I'll jump in, Senator, I just, we had a call with the Secretary Setters this afternoon about this issue. And it sounds like the vast majority of vaccine distribution is going to be done through CVS and Walgreens. So there's a partnership with those two entities and they are going to actually be coming out into these congregant care facilities in the, in the, you know, in the districts and the towns. I understand there may be some individual communities who are offering some limited vaccine distribution through, you know, Department of Public Health. But I don't, I don't get the sense that it's all of them by any means, recognizing that that's a pretty substantial commitment on the part of the town, especially with the Pfizer vaccine, I think requires very, very low temperatures, which requires specialized equipment. So I would say for all intents and purposes, it's it's, the public will be receiving it through CVS or Walgreens or some, you know, permutation thereof.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. That's all I had.
All right, now Brian Shea, Mr. Shea.
Thank you. And Carolyn, Jamie, thank you both again for joining us. Always appreciate you taking the time to provide these updates. Always very informative. One thing that I just wanted to follow up on is something that you had mentioned about the public health grants, the $10 million grant for public health. And just curious on timing of that and, you know, when do you think that money might become available as well? Certainly, public health departments all across the state have finished the the year and started this year in a much different manner than they had planned going into the workload that they've all had to undertake has been, has been tremendous. So it's good to recognize that at the state level to provide the funding. But I'm just curious if you could give a little bit more detail on timing for that.
My, my, you know, I think Representative Dykema might know better. But I mean, assuming that, you know, most of the budget's been signed, you know, we'll see what the legislature does on overrides, but it usually takes, you know, I'd say a month, a month or two before money, you know, gets out to different, you know, towns and cities or agencies. So that's, that's my, that's my prediction, yeah. Rep. Senator, if you have a different view.
No, I I don't, Senator, I think I I agree. I think it's, you know, it's not lost on anyone, the importance of these funds, I guess, is all I would say. So hopefully sooner than later.
Yep.
Very good. Thanks again for your updates.
Thank you.
You all set, Brian?
Yes, I am.
Okay. And finally, Sam Stivers, Mr. Stivers, I, I'm going to go out on a limb here and and guess that the subject of a parcel off of Main Street and $250,000 may come up. Sam?
No, no, I'm not, I'm saving my powder for a couple of other things. I hope that one's in there still. I thought you were going to say last and least. Here I am. A couple of things, again, thanks very much for being here this evening. As always, great support from the two of you and we greatly appreciate that. One small point, very interested in the public health support. We're scrambling, as you could imagine, to get better prepared for that. If you do a quick math calculation on the $10 million grant or grant fund available that proportional to population, we're due for about $14,000 out of that. It would be great if we could collectively find a way to get a larger piece of that because we do have a number of pretty important things. We've got a lot of contact tracing going on and vaccine. We've got concerns about people who don't have a lot of mobility in town. So it's not like we can tell people to go to your CVS or your doctor or whatever easily. So we've got to have some capacity to do that in town. That's going to be, again, administratively costly to follow up on. So any help we can get there would be great. My other point is related to open space trails kind of things. Our, you've mentioned DCR. We're really very interested in finding a way to accelerate the DCR as a cooperation with a public access plan for one of our trail segments near Fayetteville Dam. We're trying to complete a critical trail length there. And there's been a lot of back and forth on it. They've been helpful, but not as fast as we'd like. So anything we can do to expedite, that would be very helpful. And in terms of open space, I think I've mentioned this to Representative Dykema quite a while back. But as the Mass Pike Accelerate Bridge Project goes on this coming summer, there's a small piece of property near Parkerville Road that Mass Dot owns adjacent to the Pike. And there's a strange zigzag on the property line along the Pike, the Pike there, that if we could get that adjusted a little bit, which looks to be possible, we could get access to an important piece of open space in the town through a trail or or an easement at least, parallel to the Pike down there, that I think maybe it made sense when they constructed it because it's a fairly steep hill. But ongoing, it doesn't seem obvious why they need that property. So again, would like to follow up on that at some point. But that would open up access to what we think is a very valuable piece of open space for public access there. So so those are the ones on my list and I will continue to watch the the $250,000 with great interest. So thanks as always.
Great, thanks, Sam. We'll, we'll follow up on the DCR as well as the other DCR requests. Thanks.
Thank you.
The only, the only thing I would, I would just mention, Sam, is the the federal funding. You know, we are still hoping for the federal funding and and hoping that that will supplement the local public health resources as well.
Thank you.
Hi, I've got a, I'm going to, I'm going to try to address and and talk with you about a couple of things. But Vanessa, is Superintendent Martino in the audience?
Not at this time, no.
He's not, okay, that's fine. I was hoping to have you out of here in an hour and I think we are very much on track to do that. So very quickly, you mentioned the police reform bill. First, a quick update. In the fall, our board met with both our police chief and with our fire chief. And we actually consider ourselves pretty lucky in Southborough. And we've got some very forward-thinking chiefs and departments. And they walked through steps that they've taken historically and in light of the events of 2020, that they've, they've stepped up in terms of of recruiting ideas, hiring ideas, reporting ideas, if in the unfortunate, you know, situation, there, there are incidents in the, in the town. And I, you, you both mentioned the police reform bill and and I saw the the newspaper reports. What, is there, is there much of a gap between the bill that was passed by the legislature and what Governor Baker sent back with his comments? And and are we like to get it, are we likely to get a pretty good package compromise or otherwise as a result of that process?
Yeah, I mean, I think that there are, you know, I mean, I think there are are key parts of the bill where there is agreement. But clearly, there were areas where there was, you know, disagreement. And that's why, you know, the governor didn't just send back amendments, but, you know, said that he would, he would veto them, depending on what the legislature did. You know, I would just, very quickly, as far as what the governor sent back that the legislature had passed, and this is the conference committee, you know, rejected a facial recognition ban by government, except for the RMB, putting rulemaking around certain uses of force under EOPS versus the independent post-commission, changing the definition of biased policing, changing some of the standards around the prohibition of certain uses of of force, and then delaying the implementation of the bill to July 2021. So, you know, the the areas of agreement, you know, this idea of a statewide, you know, entity that would license all police officers, train all police officers, I think we have a consensus there. And there's many, many details of the bill that the governor, you know, agreed to. But but those, the ones that I just highlighted, you know, I think are, you know, fairly important differences. And, you know, it remains to be seen what the legislature will do, but I know we're all taking a look at them.
Yeah, I would, I would just echo the Senator's comments. I think, you know, the the bill that we came forward with at a conference committee was a really strong bill. I think it's important to to not forget about the major areas of agreement, which are the the post-commission, which is a certification process for police officers, as well as a decertification process for those officers. And I think we all, you know, recognize that this is not, not a lot of officers. It's certainly not the majority of officers. But for those that, you know, need to be held accountable for certain things, there is a process now to do that. There, the other significant piece of of contention, I guess, during the conference was the qualified immunity and limits to qualified immunity for police officers. And that was included in the final, in, you know, the the governor did not veto that section, which I thought was very, I was very pleased with that. So there are some areas of disagreement still at this point. I think there are probably things that we will work through. I will know, I I don't know what the numbers are on the Senate side, but I will say on the House side, at least, coming out of the the conference package, we do not have enough votes to override a veto. So it will really be a matter of whether we can negotiate to something that will, you know, get the, get the majority of House votes. Otherwise, the governor kind of, the governor has a lot of cards at this point. So it'll, it'll be challenging to override his veto.
Great, second area, both of you have touched on it a little bit. And I'm going to keep myself to my own limit of two or three. So this is number two for me. And that is the 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 commuter issue. And the, obviously, your, the, the, the frequency of the, the, the trains is a big issue. But again, someone who goes in and out every day, what sort of discussion is going on or is going to be going on about the safety issue? For, I mean, again, you take that train at, you know, 7:00 in the morning, 8:00 in the morning, and there's three people on this side, two people on that side, and oftentimes people standing in the middle. I'm not sure that folks are going to be comfortable for a long time with that sort of setup. And are there, again, are there discussions that are, that are either ongoing or in the offing about, again, how to address that? We all want the volume back of people going in and out of Boston and and commuting. But boy, those numbers on those trains are, it, it, we're going to look at it differently, I think.
Yeah, I agree. And it's ironic, Marty, this conversation actually came up at the Fiscal Management Control Board. The secretary raised it. And I think the most important thing is to recognize the distinction between the reality and the perception, right? Sometimes perception can drive reality. But the interesting statistic, and I wish I remembered the specifics, but they actually did some, I I forget what country it was in, but they found that even in fairly congested train cars, public transit was not a major contributor to COVID spread. So even when they had closed down significant parts of the economy, they ended up not limiting their transit during a second wave that they had because their numbers of transmission were so, so low. So I think the reality is, is that public transit is not a big, you know, spreader of of the COVID virus. But how can we make sure that the public has the confidence? And I think, you know, one of those things which the T is doing right now and and Keolis is doing now is to really enforce some of the mask wearing. I think one of the concerns they had heard from riders was that a lot of the staff, conductors and others who worked for the train were not wearing their masks or not wearing them properly. So they have an active enforcement policy and actually have some accountability measures now on that and some regular, I guess, spot, spot checks on that, you know, looking toward the future and making sure that these patterns and these habits are where they need to be when we start to get more ridership. So it, you know, it's on the, on the docket, I guess, for more conversation more broadly, and it's recognized as a concern.
Marty, before you move on, if I could just add one
Sure.
quick thing. So I know that that Sam had mentioned the one open space issue with the fence on the highway, but I see that the Chair of Open Spaces is here. So and she sent the question in. So would it be proper to have her come in and provide follow-up if needed or to answer any questions?
Yeah, what I was going to do is after I I do my third,
Sorry.
then, then I think, again, with the idea of 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 getting the the representative and Senator out of here by 7:30, I was going to see if there were any folks who were dialing in from outside who wanted to raise a question with either of them or a comment, so.
Okay, great, sorry.
That's fine. Oh, no, no, that's fine. And my final thing is you both, you both mentioned, if you look ahead on our agenda for later tonight, we've got, we're wrestling with zoning issues in the, in the town of Southborough. And a big part of that, a big part of that discussion having to do with zoning and also some other areas has to do with affordable housing. I mean, it is, it is beyond a complicated problem for a small town like Southborough. And so I think we will be pestering you, both of your offices, because we're, we are doing the best we can, I think, to try to come to grips with how we can address it. But I wonder if you just have any thoughts, whether it's the legislation that is, that you mentioned where where affordable housing is one of the elements? Just some, some additional thoughts in in that area. As I said, it's something that's very much on our front burner right now.
Absolutely. Yeah, no, I, I, every town is, is, you know, focused on this. I I know that a lot of my other towns, if they hadn't yet already, they created an affordable housing trust to receive, you know, monies, which which would can, which can be a way to to get subsidies or build affordable housing. I know Westborough just did that recently. You know, the housing authorities in Acton, the town bought You know, the housing authorities in Acton, the town bought some lands. So it's, it's now town land, and they're building 54 units of housing, low-income housing for seniors and people with disabilities. So, you know, sometimes I talk to towns or cities about, you know, if they have a old police station or municipal building or, you know, municipal lands, that that's a way to make the finances work to build affordable housing. You know, there, at the state level, there is this Affordable Housing Bond Bill, which we passed last session, and that has multiple grants and incentives and, you know, tax breaks to build affordable housing. It certainly, to your point, Marty, it certainly is complicated. But, you know, there are nonprofit developers that can, you know, help with that. I'm happy to connect you to. And then, I guess, the last thing I would say is that, you know, getting Mass Works grants money is that one of the priorities of the Baker-Pleito administration in terms of scoring some of the Mass Works grants is, you know, will this result in multifamily or affordable housing? So, you know, two of my towns, Ayr and Acton, got Mass Works grants because part of the plan for that infrastructure investment is building affordable housing. So that, that helped get those grants across the finish line to, for the towns to receive them. So, but I'm happy to have a, you know, longer conversation about, you know, how to build affordable housing in the suburbs. It's certainly hard, but it is, it is possible.
I'll just add one thing, and I want to recognize the Senator because he is really the, he has been talking about this issue for a really long time and is really the expert on it and has really worked hard on legislation. The only thing I would add is the fact that Southborough has a train station, which is a really valuable commodity. And I think anything that you can do by way of housing near a train station or transit-oriented development, that will often kind of put you toward the top of the list for any available funds through any of the programs that you might be looking at. So that's just a great asset that, that Southborough can, you know, take advantage of it if it has the opportunity.
Great. If you will indulge and see if there are some folks in our audience who might have a comment or a question for you. Again, and I'm still going to try to get you out of here at 7:30. Vanessa, can you help me out? Are there any hands raised?
There are, Ms. Gillespie.
Okay. Freddie Gillespie, Chair of our Open Space Committee.
Hi, everyone.
There you go.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Never thought I'd be saying that so much. Hi, everyone. Jamie and Carolyn, thank you for being here tonight. And I believe Sam brought it up already, but just wondering what the next steps would be. We have the Halloran Open Space property that abuts the Mass Pike. I don't know how much detail Sam went into it, but it isn't very, the access isn't very good. And when we first saw this, when it was first brought to the Open Space Commission, we recognized that when it was first addressed as a potential property. And we noticed through GIS that the Mass Pike land leading up to it is very wide. And the chain link fence, if it could be moved over, there's, the old Richards Road, which was cut off by the Mass Pike, would actually be a potential parking area where people could pull over their park and walk into the property on the Mass Pike land, except for there's a chain link fence there. And we had thought with the construction of the bridges and having crews there, that would be the perfect time to see if they could move the fence over and give us whatever easements needed to have public access there. And who do I follow up with, with working with the Selectmen, working with you, the Open Space Commission, Recreation, the Trails Committee?
I guess I would just suggest, I think you probably, endorsement here of the Board of Selectmen, I would imagine, since it was on the question list. But that, you know, that would be the first step, obviously, is to have the endorsement of the board for us to move forward. Jamie and I can certainly, you know, connect with Mass DOT. What would be really helpful is maybe a description of the project and a map so that we can get a better understanding of, of the area and what the request is. And then we can reach out to Mass DOT and, and work with you on any follow-up. And it would be great to have maybe a designated, either a designated Select Board member or Mark or whoever would be the best person to work with from the town.
I believe Sam had already done a little bit of digging into this before, so he might be someone who would work with the Open Space Commission. Did you have some maps done, Sam?
You're muted, Sam.
Sorry, thanks. I do have a map of that. I can make it available to folks.
Yeah, we have GIS, you know, off the towns, GIS. And that's how we saw it in the first place. But it would be, it would make a property that's pretty much landlocked. It has value because the neighbor's children are still using it. But it's, it could have greater public access if we were able to get this opening to it. It's not perfect either. The slope's there, you know, but I, I don't think it goes through any wetlands, which is a plus. Always a plus.
Great, thanks, Freddie. Vanessa, I think we had, we would have time for maybe one more if there is. If not, do we have any other hands raised?
Ms. McKee from Trails.
Oh. We met, we, I definitely bring Carolyn over. We met with our Trails Committee, I think, at our last meeting. And you may or may not know, they have been incredibly active and incredibly productive. And I know exactly what they're going to ask you about.
Yes. Hi, this is Catherine. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Great. Thank you. So thank you so much for those updates. Very helpful. I'll be very brief. I wanted to thank Sam for bringing up the very important point of the public access plan. So I wanted to offer my assistance to you to get you a description and a map of the information of where we're talking about so that when you do reach out to DCR, you'll have all of the background information that will make that communication much easier for you. And thank you for your assistance with that as well.
Great, thank you.
All right, it is 7:27. If, if either of you have any, you know, sort of final thoughts, we're happy to hear them. And, but otherwise, we will let you enjoy the rest of your evenings. And again, for the, for the board, for the, you know, the residents of the town of Southborough, can't say enough how much we appreciate you're making yourselves available. And as I said, the, for setting such a high bar in terms of constituent service.
Great. Well, thanks, thanks so much for having us. Very thoughtful questions. Always good to see you all. And, and yeah, we'll be in touch and follow up on these matters. So thanks, thanks again.
Great.
Ditto what the Senator said, and just want to wish everybody a happy holidays.
All right. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Take care. Right, and I saw Ms. Gallagher lurking. So I know she's there. As we move on to schedule appointments, the Karen Gallagher, DPW Superintendent. Hi, Karen.
Hi, I'm sorry about that. I have no idea why I just bounced right in when I turned on the computer. I was like, oh no. Thank you. Sorry about that.
That's all right. Hey, we've got three things listed for you to report on. And I think it makes sense to do them actually in reverse order.
Okay.
I think the Main Street update will be relatively quick. And I think the CSX discussion may be relatively long. So why don't we, why don't we start at the bottom with the Main Street update?
Okay, so the Main Street project, you can kind of tell, is pretty much 99% done. There's punchless items, obviously, we're still, we're going to have to go through. We also have the crosswalks, if you, if everyone remembers the plans from, and all the original drawings. We, we had a imprinted red brick-looking crosswalk. So those are, those are set for next spring. And there's some remaining shrubs and, and trees. Other than that, it's really done. I think it came out pretty good. It was a nice, and I actually thought it didn't, maybe COVID helped, but it really ended up not being near as disruptive as I think I was worried about. So that, that ended up, I thought it was a pretty good project altogether. But we, with all the drainage that we did with the library and with adding the sidewalks, I actually think it's improved quite a bit what's going on in there. We've, and we were able to just fix a lot of problems, and not doing it on our dime was really nice. So, but just those couple of things, and then they'll be done. I think they'll probably be out by June.
Okay. A couple of quick things, and then see if anyone else has any questions or comments about it. Number one, we've had some questions about some of the safety, I don't want to say issues, because, but safety stuff, just simple things like stop signs. And those are, at least at the front end, those are state determinations about where stop signs are put, correct?
It's actually, it's actually federal. The, so stop signs where they have to be placed is, there's a munis, it's a Uniform Traffic Control Device Manual, so it's MUTCD, and that tells you where, where you need to put signs and where there is, there's requirements on that, yes.
Okay. So in terms of placement, that, that is simply adhering to federal guidelines?
And yes.
A, I don't think there's a whole lot we should do about it. But even if we wanted to, there's not a whole lot we could do about it.
Correct.
Okay. That's number one. Number two is, there are still some poles that are coming down, aren't there?
Yes. So the, the work for the utility work, that's really not, it, it is part of the project, obviously, but it's, it's not under the control of the state as much as the utilities. You can't really control them. So they're going to be able to keep doing that work all winter. But I still think they'll be done by next June. Like, I do think we'll be 100% done with.
Okay, so those double poles will be single.
They won't be there for long.
Okay. Ms. Malinowski, any comments or questions for Ms. Gallagher on that subject? No? Mr. Shea, you've got some familiarity with this project?
A little bit, a little bit. Just one question I had, and I know this was a state project, but I'm just curious if you're aware of any outstanding issues, complaints that, or follow-up that the state needs to do with residents on the project? And, you know, if, you know, that, if you, maybe just give a brief update on that, if anyone's listening from that perspective, what the best route is to follow up.
We do have a couple of things, some, some are things that I've seen that I want to get fixed. Some are resident, we need to look at the stone wall. When you're coming out of School Street and you look to your left, that wall is high. It's kind of causes a little bit of obstruction. The state's meeting on that seat, I think we can just honestly pull down the wall a little bit. I don't think it's going to be a huge problem. But that's, that's one thing on the punch list. They have St. Mark's, they have Combe Street labeled as St. Mark's Street in one spot. That needs to be fixed. And then, you know, there's just some other kind of, just cleanup issues that need to get done. As far, there's a little bit, there's a couple of spots where it doesn't ride quite right, and I'm not 100% sure what the state is going to do with that. But those, those things are all part of the punch list for the spring.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Stivers.
Thanks. Small point, Karen. I occasionally see what I consider to be strange behavior of the traffic light at 85 and 30 there. It appears to be a smart light in concept, but sometimes it doesn't seem to pick up the fact that nobody's coming from any direction and doesn't cycle nearly so quickly. Is that still in the process of being evaluated, tuned and updated? Or do we have what we're going to get there at this point?
I'll, I'll check on that. I, we can, I believe it's been troubleshoot, troubleshooted, troubleshoot. But, I'll try to word for that. But it is, it's definitely something that, those things do go wonky periodically. We have problems with ours too, where they'll, they'll just randomly decide to cycle through a cycle versus listening to the, and at one point, I thought that they had cut in all the, all the loops, but they might not be in all the way, actually. So I'll find out on that, and I'll just, I'll send Mark something he can send out to you.
Put that on the list to watch going along. Again, I haven't seen it much, but a couple of times I've sat there and nothing's happening. And I sit there, I'd sit there. Overall, it's, it's a smart light, and it is a good thing. Thanks.
Yeah, it is incredible how much safer taking those left-hand turns is with the, it's, it's, I take them a lot. Ms. Bracio.
Great, thank you. Thank you for being here, Karen. Just one, one question, and I had mentioned this to Mr. Purple Pryor. When you go into the townhouse or out of the townhouse, can we at least put up some bump sign? My car, I didn't realize how low it was until the other day. I really wasn't paying as much attention as I should have, and I, like, hit the bottom. So I'm sure there's other people that have, have done that. So can we just put up something to say, "Slow down" or "Bump" or something?
Yes, actually, Ms. Purple had asked me to put those signs up, and I neglected too. So yes, we'll get those up. That, that is actually, we had them come and look at that, and they didn't build it to the, to the design. So that, that is something that has to be fixed. Yeah, it's horrible. It's just horrible. It's not a good, not a good approach either way. So, yeah.
Okay, that's great.
I don't know if they tried to accommodate, I was talking with Karen about this, whether they tried to accommodate the sidewalk going across and didn't account for the traffic, having to come down over the top of it. But, yeah.
Yeah, it just, it wasn't good.
And I give credit to your plow people, but, you know, that plow up there too. I mean, I can't imagine when it's covered with snow and you're making that first pass, and, boy, you hit that. That's got to be something.
Yeah, I noticed it actually pulled some up the other day. So it, it's going to look bad by the end of the, by the end of winter.
Yeah. Overall, great project. Everything looks spectacular, but thank you. That's it, Marty. Thank you.
Okay, great, thanks. And Karen, and also Brian, in terms of fights that were fought, you might remember the, the stone mileage marker and the fight about whether or not that could stay in the middle of that intersection. And that was such a, that's, it's great that it's still there.
Yeah, it looks good.
And they did a very nice job with it. So, okay. Item two, proposal for the Pocket Park at the intersection, and also just the intersection generally. You had talked about that with us three or four meetings ago.
Yes. So, I, sorry. Let me get my thought. Do, do you have any of the plans, like, I, I do have a couple of plans that, if I can share a screen, if I can figure out how to do it, I could, I could just show you kind of what are most recent. We met with St. Mark's, again, actually today, the engineer and St. Mark's and myself. And we just kind of talked to, to kind of go over to show what things were. I don't, I need to find out, get the exact, because we need to, basically, we would, the town would give them a license to use the right-of-way, and they would give us an easement to create a right-of-way, right? And it, so very similar to what we have there currently, where they use, they, they have a license to, where they put the stone wall, right? So that was, that used to be the town's property, and it's, it still is, but it's, it's a, we have a license. They have a license so that they can use it and maintain it. So that's basically what this would do. But by fixing the intersection, so we drainage, we fix the intersection, which will make it a better approach for, for the fire trucks. It'll actually be the, probably the best approach for the fire trucks to get to the town hall and to Chode Circle and to Pilgrim Church, obviously, and Flag School.
Karen, I've got the, I've got the maps that you sent me up. I've picked one, which I think might be helpful to you. So if you want to share a screen, it might be easier for you to talk to that.
Sure.
And if I don't have the ability to do that, Vanessa will tell me.
I'm, so I'm not, I might, I can share a screen too. I, or actually, as long as you, as long as you have mouse control. So, so we can point at things.
Is that the right?
Yes. So this is the most recent concept. If you look at this, so it's, it's not really colored. But if you, so if you look at the very top of the page, right? You see St. Mark's driveway coming out from the right, where his hand, the hand is. And then on the left, right now, the left of the street, the west side, that would be, that would be the St. Mark's Street, right? And that's how you would enter. So what would happen is, you can kind of see the gray lines in there. I, it's hard, it's hard to see, but they almost, the gray lines, they follow along. And then they meet, they meet up kind of by the S in St. Mark's Street, the first S on Saint, right? So you just, it goes down. That, that piece, that whole piece of right-of-way would be licensed to St. Mark's, right? And if you look within that, you see like an island in the middle of, of, like, it's a darker color. It's an island. It has a little three for three parking spots, right? If, if you look under that in the faded gray, If, if you look under that in the faded gray, that's their existing spots right now that they have. Like they have that little gravelly area. So if you, if you, that kind of can situate you a little bit, if that makes sense to anybody, that I, I tried to color one up and let me see if I can.
Karen, I'll tell you, it makes, it is, basically what you're describing is, is right now, that street is, is directly across from the State Marks driveway.
Yes.
So what you're talking about, if I'm, if I'm reading the map correctly, is blocking that off, moving the, the street, I don't know, some number of feet down towards the library? And, and am I correct so far?
Yes, yep.
And so, and so the parking then would be, what is that, north of
North, yep.
the street and south of the street would be what?
So, south of the street. And this, this is part of where it gets interesting, we can do some stuff. That we'd have to get a license, I would say, for St. Mark's and we'd have to work with them on this. But the library, the library's right there, right? The parking lot. So what happens is, is we can put there basically a pocket park. And in that spot, we could do, because the library's got some stuff, and I haven't really talked to Library Director Ryan in a little bit about this, because we met, and we met with Open Space about doing, doing a native garden, native species garden or pollinator garden. And that was before and that's on library property, but we could extend that out into here, benches and such. VHB had given us a couple of different ideas. One, one thing that does happen in this area is that there's a lot of historical stuff to look at. There's a lot of town properties, right? You've got the, you've got the old cemetery, you've got the library, and then you've got the Flag School, so that's the museum. And what happens is, is the only ways to get anywhere is on the streets, right? We don't have any, and I want to call it trail, like walkways. So what's, part of the idea is that it could almost be not like the Freedom Trail, because that clearly is like a much more major thing, but have a, have more of a trail within, alongside the library that gets you over to here and then can get you up onto, up onto St. Mark's Street, so you get to Flag School, that you could get to the town hall, you can get to the, you can get to the entrance of the old cemetery. So that's what we're trying to do, is basically make a, make a connection in that area to connect that to Main Street. Does that make sense? So that's, that's sort of where we could get this integrating, integrating this area or using this intersection to help integrate the area and give us like a pocket park and stuff. That's, that's where we could, the shared streets and spaces for the winter, the winter version would work well.
Cool. Let me, let me see, we'll start with Mr. Shea. Brian, any comments or, or questions for Karen on this?
Yeah, so Marty, I think you had mentioned that across from the St. Mark's driveway, where the road currently is, that that would be blocked off, but on this plan, it almost seems as though that would be a secondary outlet out of this parking area?
Yes, so on this plan, it does show that, and we were talking back and forth about that quite a bit, about whether you would just circulate through or if we would, if there would be an outlet onto Marlborough Road. Part of, part of, you know, the St. Mark's concern was actually like, won't people just, like they're used to turning there? Aren't they just going to turn in and think it's the road and now they're in a parking lot? And, you know, there is obviously that concern a little bit. So, they're, they're more interested, I think, in actually blocking that off and circulating through St. Mark's Street. But that was just an option that, that, in this, this version, because it was, it was like a quick, hey, give me something so I can explain to them how many spots they could get.
All right, and the area where the parking would be proposed? Would that, has been any thought to whether that would be paved, that would be a gravel to match existing? And if it is paved, even if it is gravel, will that have any impacts on the drainage system downstream? Like, and I don't want to be in a situation where we're reintroducing problems with the library.
Correct. So we would, drainage from this intersection is going to hook into the pipe that's on Marlborough Road and then does end up at the golf course. And that, that's one thing, based on, based on the surfaces, VHB hasn't done all the calculations yet to determine if we need to do any kind of onsite retention ponds or if, if all of it can flow. We obviously want the street is, has to flow on into our property, into our system. We, we want that. And there's obviously a sidewalk. This, this sidewalk is, is meant to extend as part of this project from the exist, from where we left it off at the tip all the way to the west campus of St. Mark's. And then that other project that we talked about, that we got survey money for, for before, at my last meeting with you guys, that goes from there all the way up to the Marlborough Road turn, where 85 turns and comes south. So, you know, the whole goal is obviously to, to integrate sidewalks here and get, get this to be more of a walkable town. But that, the drainage there, we haven't done like a full-on, and, and adding parking spots, obviously, that's a site plan issue. So there's a little bit of permitting and all, and we would have to really make sure we had, we were on board with, we're planning, was on board with this. And, you know, the whole town should be proponents for it, I think. Open Space, Library, everybody should find this to be a good project. Whether or not it's paved does obviously make a difference. I believe St. Mark's would like to have it paved. Whether or not this project could pay for the paving is also another thing. So, you know, because currently there's, it's, it's gravel and it is limited, those, this, these funds are only $300,000, I think, max. But it might be in the best interest of the town to, to, to put money towards that either way.
Okay, that's it for me, Marty.
Okay, thanks, Brian. Sam?
Thanks, thanks Karen for the update. Interesting improvement here. Small point, I'd vote for access at both ends of the parking lot, just to improve flow there. I like what you're saying about the walk, walkways through here. I assume that one of the walkways would be across the new St. Mark's Street down into the library parking lot. So if people wanted to park in this lot for a library function, we wouldn't have the parking overflow problem that we have now for some popular library functions. So you get access by foot from the new parking spaces down to the library.
Yes, I think they, there would be some sort of parking areas in terms of getting the walkways to, to meet up so that you could get from one to the other. It is mainly a St. Mark's parking lot, but what would happen is, is we could, we would want it, we would want to kind of keep them separated and have it, have it be so that, we did talk about it a little bit, that if, if the town invested and helped invest and paved in it, helped with pavement costs, then at that point, it would make a lot of sense to have, to, then we'd say, hey, we want this to be partially public. Like, you know, give, give us some spots. And there would be days that it would be St. Mark's's only, but I do think, I don't think all our stuff conflicts that often. So like, we have big nights with candidate night and all that, that they tend to have it more during sports programs. But I think, I think we could really work this together as a nice community group.
Yeah, and I think you're exactly right. There are not that many events at the library, but it's nice to have the capacity.
Yes, yes.
If we need it. Are you working
And part of the walk, sorry, part of the walkway system too would have, you could more easily get from the town hall to the library too for spots. And that, that, that's, this concept originally started as the idea that, hey, we could take and I could connect the library and St. Mark's and have it one big lot, because we were losing on-street parking on Main Street. But this actually works out better because we need to improve that intersection.
Good. And are you working with the Historical Commission on the, the walk that you're talking about, who you talked about connecting?
No, that, that was kind of a fresh shot of the head today.
Okay, because I've heard Historical Commission actually talking about having some sort of history walk through the downtown area. So they've thought about that and I don't, I don't, I've not seen any specific plans. But that sounds like that's a good fit with what they've been talking about, so I would urge you to connect with them.
Yeah, no, I will, I'll contact them.
Good, thanks. That's it for me. Thank you.
Ms. Bracio.
Thank you, thank you, Karen. I'm a little confused and I'm hoping that you can, you can help me with this. So, is this a parking lot or is this for a pocket park? I, I'm just trying to, to understand, because it's been pitched as a pocket park, but I don't see a park. I don't know how big the park is, but I see a ton of parking spots. And so can you conceptually tell me how big of an area that the park would be?
Yes, well, conceptually, a little tough, but can you hold on one second? Yeah, sorry. Sorry, so as far as the reason, the reason this is showing parking is because it, this, I put this, well, I asked VHB to put this together so that St. Mark's could look at it, because their, their concern was, will we have enough parking? And this actually, I think, gives them more spots than they had. So if you think of the area between, if you, if you kind of look back at this plan and you look at that little gray, the gray line, which, so from about 20 feet south of that on to the, to the library's parking lot, so it's, it's a fairly good area. That's where we would be able to have the pocket park. As far as like the native species garden and all that. And I actually, I can probably even hold them up. I know it's going to look stupid, but that is not unusual for things that I do. Can you see this at all? So does that help a little bit with your spacing? So, if, let me make sure I'm, I can't really see it good myself. So, if you look, here's the library over here. Here's this area that we could make into like a pocket park, and here's where the parking is.
Okay.
Okay, and then I can show you kind of some concepts that they kind of came up with quickly. They, this, does that look like anything to anybody? I know, right? We're supposed to be like all high-tech and I'm sorry, I'm holding up pieces of paper at you.
Looks like the COVID virus.
Yeah, this one actually does, doesn't it? So as far as, but like this is the kind of walkway idea and they were saying, oh, you know, basically there's a lot of brick, there's a lot of stone up in that area, so that's what they were looking at, like, you know, you could make, you could do this within the woods, you know, wooded area, you can do the walkways like this, and this is like a native species park. So that's, it was just real quick concepts that they gave me those pieces of paper today. I'm glad they gave them.
So, could, I, I think the first one that you showed, that granted, it was a little hard to see. Is there any way that, because it does show a little bit better relation to why we need so many parking spots for one thing? Is there any way that you can get that to Mr. Purple and he can scan that and, and forward that to the board? Again, it, it just gives a bigger picture, so.
Yep, oh absolutely, I can give that, I can send that to him tomorrow.
That's perfect. And then the current trees that are there, Karen, there's that little wooded area. Does this plan call for taking down any of those trees?
Those real hazard dead ones, yes. St. Mark's doesn't want all the trees down, so I think they're going to kind of try to make it more into like a wooded, wooded trailed area. I mean, it's really small, obviously, but you could walk in there and that was like that, the weird wood benches and that type of thing in there, so it'd be more of a rustic little spot to sit.
Okay, no, I was just curious. I know that there's small levels of wildlife in there. I've rescued a baby raccoon from in there before, so. So, on this, let's go back to the parking for two seconds if I can. So, who is going to pay to maintain this parking lot?
It's St. Mark's spot, lot, so it would be St. Mark's. We wouldn't, we wouldn't have anything to do with it. The original, when I was looking at trying to make the parking lot connect to the library and it was going to be a big joint one, then it was more of, geez, why don't we maintain, like, we, we're going to be plowing the library lot, we'll plow that while we're there, but now, now that's not the case.
Okay, and there's one, one final question. So can you just briefly talk about the funding source? I know you mentioned the $300,000, so is, is this through a grant? The, the shared streets or, I'm just trying to figure out how it's going to be paid, if it's paved. Who, who's going to be paying for it, again, whether it be a grant or whatnot?
So, the, as much as we can get into the shared streets winter grant is what we're, what we're trying to put into it. I don't think all the costs will be covered by that. I know that Ms. Gillespie and Library had worked and they, they have a, a grant for the, the native species garden, right? So that, whether they want to move that, whether we want to elongate it, whether they can get extra money for, into that, we might be able to use that. There was talk about taking some of the, depending on what happens at 21 Highland, taking some of the, those playground pieces, be able to reuse that over there, and so, so it's, it's ultimately, I, I mean, I know you just closed the warrant for a spring town meeting, so we can't put money in for that, but there, there is the thought that there'll be other grants coming and the library has these, like I said, they, they've been working with Open Space on those native species. So I do believe that we could get more money into that if we needed.
Okay, and one final just follow-up question, Karen. So, we don't own this property. Are we, as a town, allowed to apply for grants to install parking on property we don't own?
So, we can, if we have an agreement with the owner, we, we can use it for that. The part, like I said, I don't think we would, I don't think the grant is really going to apply for the parking. I think it's going to be the intersection fixes and the pocket park. The parking is, basically, we're taking away their parking in a way and we're adding it or just improving it as, as a kind of a bonus, because ultimately, we end up with more of their land than they end up of ours.
Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Ms. Malinowski.
Thanks, Karen. I do have a few questions. So in that gravel rectangle, that's the parking that you're talking about, is going away? That's the only parking that's going away?
Right, and it's, it's not really going away, obviously, but what happens is, they only gravel that much, but people park, obviously, all in that little triangle. So they, they have more parking than that space shows.
Okay, okay, so they're, so they're ending up with 53 spots?
If, if this is the concept, they go with yes.
Okay, and so are they, are they asking the town to pay for the paving of that and that's not covered by the grant? I guess I'm just trying to understand how it's going to get paved, if that's what they want.
Um, so they, they, we're still at, and it, it's kind of because we're on this fast track to try to get the grant money, the, the grant application in. We haven't vetted it near as much as we normally would at this point. I mean, St. Mark's obviously would like to, I mean, we'd like them to pay it, pave it, they're going to want us to pave it. I mean, we know where all that's going, right? We will have to have quite a few discussions and negotiations over that. It is something that part of the, part of the project, no matter what, would, would level and gravel that, right? Because normally, we'd level it and low and seed it, well, you can level and gravel and that's going to be the same price. But that would have to be done, so we can guarantee we can do that much to the project.
Okay, okay. And the shared streets winter grant, that, where we have one project we can apply for, for that grant, is that right?
Right, so you can, you can apply, you apply twice, but you only get one, right? And if you, so you can get rejected twice, you can reject it once and try again. But you can't, you, you can't, like if we get this, we can't get any other grant.
So do you think, in your opinion, is this the best project that we have right now that we could apply for, for this grant?
I, I believe it integrates the most of what they want on the grant, which is some outdoor spaces for, for gathering, right? And, and more of a park kind of in, in an integration of, of different areas of a town. So that's, you know, and they want to kind of be with the main street, but this sort of is connecting to a main street.
Okay, thank you. And my last question is, have you talked to Chief Achilles about the reconfiguration of that street? And is this, does this drawing depict And is this, does this drawing depict the best turning radius that he could get, um, to get up that street?
Yeah. And that, I haven't talked to, um, Chief Achilles, but, um, that was one of the things that VHB worked on that I, I said, I really want to fix the intersection so that it's easier and better for the fire trucks, the turning radius. So, um, that, that was really why, how it almost ended up in this location.
Okay. So I guess my, if we can just, if you can follow up with him and just back to Lisa's tree question. Just make sure that there's no trees that would stay, that would interfere with, like hanging over, that would interfere with any trucks going in.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have.
Great. Um, thanks on that one Karen and, and, um, uh, I understand the discussions about the, um, you know, who pays for what. I, I, I think that, that you probably get a sense and, and Mark, I know you're involved in these discussions, that the, the sense of the board is that St. Mark's seems to be getting an awful lot of, um, benefit from this. I mean, we are too. And, um, uh, that right now, there's not a paved lot. And it just strikes me that if they want a paved lot, that that's something that they can cover the cost of. Um, it really shouldn't be borne by the town. Uh, I think that that would be a tough sell for me. I suspect that'd be a tough sell for the rest of the board.
And I think, uh, and I think when we were out there having this discussion with them, Karen, you can correct me if I'm wrong. Um, I, I, I guess I didn't realize how much of this that St. Mark's owns. And so therefore we're really looking for them to, um, to give us the ability. So we're getting, they're getting the parking space out of land that they own. But we're getting a license for a land that they own to move the street and to do, you know, a significant portion of the pocket park on. So it's, it's really, I think, another selling point for the shared streets grant. It's really another one of those public-private partnerships as well.
Yep. Okay. All right. Um, item three, which was originally item one.
Excuse me Marty.
Marty, I have a couple of questions.
Yeah, there's a couple of hands raised.
Oh. Who? Again, I can't see anything. I, I can just see the drawings.
Uh, Kristen LeValle and Freddie.
Okay. Um, let's go to Kristen first.
Hi there. Thank you for taking the question. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yep.
Yes.
Hey Karen, it's been a while. Um, so I'm just asking questions because admittedly I joined the call tonight for different reasons. Um, but was glad to hear this discussion and rather than share any opinion, I just, I have a couple of questions just to learn a little bit more. So was the primary driver for these discussions to start that St. Mark's wanted a expanded paved parking lot?
No, no, actually we instigated the, the discussion. Um, I originally was interested in having, because we were getting a lot of complaints from certain people during the main, during the main street design, um, that we were getting rid of the on-street parking, which is not really on-street parking, it was on sidewalk and it was not legal. However, because of the fact that we had, that, that people were parking there, I was thinking that geez, if we expanded the library parking lot and we went and we shared what St. Mark's has and we were able to pave all that and make that into a real larger parking lot, that would, that would help us accommodate more parking for the downtown people. Then, um, when it kind of came up that geez, that intersection's kind of failing because of the water and the huge puddle there. Moving the intersection made a lot of sense. And then it made more sense that geez, if we can get this grant and we can make a pocket park and knowing what, um, because I had met with Ms. Gillespie and library about, about the, the, um, little garden that they were planning on doing, I can't get that word out of my mouth today. When I was looking at that, uh, this, this came out to be a much better plan, but we do need to, you know, we want to replace their parking, be able to have some that I believe that they'll share with us. But I wanted to make sure that, um, we were able to, to, to move our street was the most important piece of this. Because, because of the drainage and everything else that we have to deal with.
Thank you. And just, just one more question, because it sounds like there are, um, others. I, I guess it's probably just echoing what, what Ms. Brashio said. And it'd be interesting to know what that demand for parking is there. Obviously St. Mark's definitely their sports, you know, you see that and it's there. What I'm getting at is like, I'm just picturing what's a really pretty kind of scenic area now, this big parking lot. But it's not our property, so I understand that that's kind of out of our control. Um, but I am curious about what the downtown demand is. I mean, of course, we do have those particular days where we have candidate's night every, yeah, every year or, you know, Santa comes or hopefully we're having heritage day again someday. But it would be interesting to know, like, is it just peak demand, like during those specific, um, events? Or is it consistent day over day that we're lacking parking spots?
Um, no, it, it, it's much more of a demand-based, um, for, for issues. I do notice a lot of people at the St., like that spot for St. Mark's does have a, a car in it almost daily. There's at least something going on there, but it's, um, it's not like flooded with vehicles. Say, uh, library also, a lot of days, it, it, it has plenty of spots and other days it has, it has none. It sort of depends on their programming. One thing about that parking lot is that, um, it would, St. Mark's, I mean, it, it might start looking like a parking lot, but they do a very good job with their landscaping and they'd be able to actually kind of blend that in well, I think, ultimately. You know, they, they tend to actually forego like spaces in an effort to, to actually make something that looked nicer. So, um, like I said, we're still in a fairly early stages of it. We're just fast-tracking it. So, um, you know, I normally wouldn't talk to the board when I had this little bit of information.
Gotcha. Alright, thank you.
Welcome.
All right. And Ms. Gillespie.
Hi everyone. Um, can you hear me now or my dog too?
Yep.
Okay, so, um, this is very exciting. Um, and I'd look forward to seeing some of these plans Karen. I was just out there with, uh, Karen and Ryan, what, two weeks ago or less, talking about the, the trail over to the townhouse next to the library, next to the cemetery. Something I started talking to Ryan about like two years ago when, at heritage day and people were trying to get up there and there wasn't an easy path. And then if you see the beautiful cemetery, we could walk alongside it. It's not clear if it's St. Mark's land or the town's land. But, um, this here is really an enhanced vision of that. And the native plant garden, I'm not sure if this is, you're thinking to replace what I'm already talking with Ryan. Cause you know, I'm certainly thinking it's to, um, increase it. But I just want to say, um, I think there's a lot of really positive, uh, potential here. The Open Space Preservation Commission is also collaborating, um, conceptually currently with St. Mark's on doing more of the native plant, um, programming for education. That's one of the programs we're talking about with the library. Um, science, CS biology connection, getting this out to the kids. It's part of the work we're doing with Professor G. Gier. And just coincidentally, I just happened to have an email I got today talking about green stormwater infrastructure. So if you're having to deal with stormwater from that project, there's a great way to use it. That's actually would be an asset to the nature-based solution to stormwater, reducing flow going into any other infrastructure. And that becomes actually, um, cost-effective to start with. So, so I've got a barking dog, but I think this is all very exciting and I look forward to talking to you more about it. And I would also say part of the parking demand, when, when the parking was changed, the illegal sidewalk parking, I think you called it, that is, um, historically traditionally used heavily on Sundays. You know, having this other walkable area to the, um, well, Pilgrim Church is one church that might be wanting to use it occasionally, if that's something for a discussion. But I know, I know we had talked with Karen about that early on. So there is demand on, um, potentially on Sundays, once COVID's over. So thank you.
All right, great. Mr. Donovan, do you have your hand up?
Am I muted?
Uh, you are not. We can still hear you.
Can somebody mute me? Or I don't see that I have that ability.
Hi. So I know this discussion has gone on long and I promised to be brief. I just, um, I wanted to go back to, to Kristen's earlier comment just about the demand. Um, I've done two strategic plans for the library since I've, um, been your director. And I would just say that parking consistently comes up as an issue. It is not simply during, um, candidate's night or some of the other high-volume adult events. It's actually pretty consistently during the summer season in particular. If any of you have ever gone or driven by the library during a summer reading event, you know what I'm talking about. We one time had a, a gentleman doing a bubble demonstration where we had almost 300 people show up. So our summer reading events can be very, um, popular, which is a great thing for the library, but it's not a great thing for parking. So I, I will echo, I think, some of the excitement about this. I do know that there, this would definitely be St. Mark's lot. But we, I, we have had some discussions with them about commencement events and some other, uh, performance, um, evenings where they have asked to use the library's parking, uh, lot. Um, because they know they're not gonna have enough in the existing gravel lot. I think it would be, I, I think definitely what Mark said about sort of the public-private partnership is definitely applicable here. I think you would find people from St. Mark's who would be very receptive about using sort of a joint setup if we needed that.
All right, great. Thank you Ryan. Karen or Mark, who's ever responsible for the plan being up there? I think we can take it down? All right, great. Anyone else on the board with anything before we move on to the next item? All right. CSX easement for the Main Street project number two.
Okay. So as far as this goes, I actually, um, CSX just called me today. I talked to, um, Derek Mahaly, who's down in Georgia. And he's kind of one of their project, well, he's this area's project manager. And it turns out that the Knights of Columbus did send in their results, uh, or their, their easement. So they have the right way, now they have a, um, their, their easement is eight feet now more than they used to have. So, um, instead of being 33 feet from the center line of the tracks, now they're, uh, 25 feet. So that has actually been handled. If you, um, some of the things that I sent in it, um, the, the plan that was there. And I don't know, because I didn't see it in the packet, there was a memo, um, with, with a plan on it. I didn't see it in the packet, but it, I don't know if you had it or not.
Yeah, it was sent to the board separately.
Oh, okay. All right. So, um, when you look at that plan, um, so if you look at the Knights of Columbus, they're on the northwest corner, northwest quadrant of that, of that, um, they, it says that they're gonna put a barrier. So the Knights of Columbus gets to choose that barrier. I believe they're looking at fencing. I have actually, can, can you put me to, if I share screen, can I do that? Do I just push the green button? If I, if I push it, you're probably just gonna see yourselves.
And, and bring up the document you want.
Yeah, I hope you're not looking at me when you're asking these questions Karen.
Okay. So what I want to be on, um, hold on, sorry. I apologize, because this is not what I normally do. Um, okay, so one, we had, we had two different, can you see this? At all? Oh, are you just seeing me?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, that's not helpful at all for you. It's not what you need.
So bring up the document and then click the share screen, the green button at the bottom.
Oh, oh, I see. Now it says share. Okay.
Perfect.
Can you see now?
Yeah.
All right. Okay. So this is, here's your downtown, right? If you look, um, you can see the tracks. Um, we have a lot of things labeled too, because technically the tracks is where you go from Main Street to East Main Street. So you have two East Main and then you have two Main, right? So that's why it looks a little wonky. So right above the little white car, just by at the, waiting at the crosswalk, that's the Knights of Columbus site. And you can look and you can see how close that property line is to that building. So they've got eight feet now there onto CSX's property that, that CSX's has, is, is going to give them an easement on. Um, that, and that's signed and sealed. So that piece, we don't have to worry about. If you look at number one, that's Lamy's, um, they're, they're all set. They're, they're working things out. And number two doesn't matter, to East Main, the, the vacant lot, that doesn't matter. That'll get dealt with when they develop. That's all set. So now we're just down to number two, which would be Morrow's. So on the, on regular Main Street. And one thing I did ask, uh, Derek, because I'm gonna say his last name wrong, was, okay, we have, we have a 25-foot easement now, or 25 feet instead of 33, when you're looking at the Knights of Columbus building. Can we take that curbing down, um, you know, and basically put a curve in before the 22, 25 foot? Like, do I have to have it hard and fast, seven-inch curb for all 25 feet? Or can I, can I have it, um, curved? And he said, no, you can, you can lower it and you can get the, you know, so you can create the, um, intersection. Now, I don't know if I can pull up the other one just as easily. Can you see a new one? Do you see anything? So there's a new plan there, right?
Yes, yes.
Okay, good. So now, all right, so you can see the hand and you see this 22. So this is, this is where they, their old driveway was for Knights of Columbus. Okay, where this, um, where I highlighted. Now you see this little purple line and there's a purple one here. This is where we can make their new driveway and this will get them at least in. Um, it's tight at the building. They have the walkway and everything. So, um, they're gonna have to, there, there will be some discussion they're gonna have to have to get better access to the back of their building. If you look, these red lines here, this is where the CSX wants us, um, we'll, we'll have curb there, but they want us to have the curb all through this, watching the hand and all this. Because, and, but like I said, they, they said we can put this curb in. And that's so that people can't have access to the tracks easily, right, for, for driving onto them. Um, same down this end, they want, and so they wanted us to extend this curb. Originally, and, um, so this would be into Morrow's. So it looks like we can put this, the, the purple line I drew, right? And so now this gives them like a 21-foot, um, driveway. And, um, when you look at that other plan, when you see this, which I think you can see now, right? A lot of their parking spots are actually on CSX's property. So that's, that's where that issue, um, kind of comes up. CSX would like us to put wallards or concrete or drizzle barriers, whatever it is that we want, down this line, down this property line, um, as part of being able to get the easement for downtown. So that's basically a summary of where it stands and what's going on with it.
So there are four properties that are, um, impacted or potentially impacted by this? And there is resolution as to three of them?
Um, yes. I think, um, so the, the northeast quadrant doesn't really have any problems yet, right? So they're still in design. The southeast, um, I believe that Ms. Lamy is trying, is going to enter into the contract with them. And so then they won't have any problem because they're, they're parked, everything will resolve itself. And northwest is, is good.
So what, you, you said Karen, that, that CSX would like us to put in the barrier in return for the easement. Obviously, right now, there's not a barrier there.
Correct.
And their position is that And their position is that, that, and I haven't seen anything to the contrary, that that's their property?
Correct.
Okay, so let's assume that, that for whatever reason, we did not proceed with that, with this project. Do you have a sense? Has CSX said what they're going to do? Are they just going to leave things as they are? Or one way or the other, is there a barrier going up there?
Um, I actually have never asked that question. If we didn't go forward with the project, I, I don't, I don't know what would happen.
Okay. Okay, that's probably a question that's worth asking. Number two, is, is there, is there a way, I understand them wanting a barrier. Is there, is there a way for that barrier to move so that parking spaces could be retained?
If, if they entered into an easement, yes.
So if, if, if Morrow's, the property owner on that, that, what is that, the southwest?
Southwest, yep.
Is there an easement, as far as you know, that CSX has put on the table as a proposal for them? Do you know one way or the other?
So they haven't, they, they haven't contacted CSX to get, last time I talked to, to CSX and to them, to get information about, like, what are you requiring? What, what do you want for an easement? I don't, they really haven't interacted at all with them. So the, I know that Lamy's and Knights, obviously Knights of Columbus, that just happened Monday, where he got that, that came through, that easement. But those two people have contacted them and were, did, obviously wanted full interest. One, I believe Lamy still is going to get it. So, but it didn't sound like Morrow's had talked to them at all.
Okay. And you said you talked to CSX, someone from CSX today?
Yes.
I mean, I guess, what is the, I mean, I'm just, I'm just curious. Do you have a sense? I understand what CSX wants to happen here. Do you have a sense for what they think is going to happen here?
Um, I, my, meaning like whether or not everyone will end up with easements?
Or?
I'm not, so I, I think CSX is basically, all right, look, this is, we need to clean this up. You're, you're doing a downtown project. You're going to draw more people in there. We want to make sure the tracks are not accessible. We want to clean up the real estate. You know, and we obviously are obligated to fix the drainage down there, which I haven't had anybody call randomly. I mean, like, people usually call us and say, hey, I've got problems with drainage. Like, your drainage is bad. I've never had that from downtown, but I've heard through some of the EDC and the planning board meetings about the northeast quadrant, that there's a big, and I mean, I know septic-wise, there's a problem down there. But I have, I had not heard that there was a lot of problems with the storm system. But we do need to replace the water. We were going to replace the, the, the gas main's going to get replaced and the drainage system. And that's why we really need that easement. And we want them to fix that crossing. At the same time, when they fix that crossing, they told me that they will, or we've been trying to negotiate that they will fix the one at Central Street because that one clearly needs it also. So CSX, you know, if we get them in, we just want them to hammer it and do it for us because they're very hard for us to get anything out of.
Okay, so, so purely from a town standpoint, though, there, there, there are some, somewhere between important and compelling reasons to do work in that area? From safety reasons, from, you know, just improving downtown generally. So there, there are, there are town reasons to, to figure out a way to get the work done down there?
Yes.
Okay, all right. I've got some other questions, I think, lurking, but, but why don't we go to, I think it's Mr. Stei, I think you're up first, Mr. Steivers?
Okay, thanks. Karen, helpful update. You said that CSX's main interest or a primary interest is safety there. Do we know if, in fact, they were to grant an easement to Morrow's of, I don't know what the exact number is, but eight feet, 10 feet or whatever, that would preserve the parking spaces as you go into the Morrow's entrance there? With a, some sort of a Jersey barrier kind of thing that would prohibit access to the tracks? Is that sufficient to deal with their safety concerns?
Yes. I mean, it would have to be along that property line.
Right.
They would like, yes.
So, but they, but potentially at least, if there was a barrier there that would preserve those additional parking spaces as you turn into Morrow's, that might satisfy their safety concerns as long as that barrier was, you know, sufficient to prohibit access to the tracks?
Yes.
Have they discussed that with Morrow's? Have they presented that to Morrow's or?
Basically, I believe that they all would have been contacted about the same thing, that basically if we give you the eight feet, you're, there needs to be a barrier. So you have, you know, you have 25 feet from center line track. There has to be a barrier so that no one can access the tracks. And then obviously, they also have a, have a limit. You can't have like vertical within 12 feet of the center line or 12 feet of the tracks because of the train, obviously.
How, how close would the, would a barrier have to be to the tracks to preserve the Morrow's parking spaces there?
Unfortunately, it's, it's almost a, it's closer to a, in some spots, like a 16-foot easement. And they're only really being, they're only able to get an eight, from 33 to 25.
Okay, so, so there, the easement required to preserve the parking spaces would be 16 feet, you're saying?
Yeah, if you, if you kind of look, the whole parking spot is on there and our parking spots are 18 to 20 feet, so it's, they've got at least 16.
Substantial increment then on the easement to get, to preserve the parking spaces.
Yes, yes.
All right, that's my primary question. Thanks.
Ms. Barashio.
Thank you. Actually, my question was the same as Sam's, so. I, I guess I'll ask a different one quickly, Karen. So just so I'm clear and understand. So basically, if the town doesn't get this, this fourth easement, then the project's not going to happen. Is, is that a safe statement based on the conversations we're having tonight?
No, so if, if the, that easement's not given, or, you know, if they don't pursue it or get it, CSX will still give us the easement and we can do our project, but,
But.
But, right, we will have to put jersey barriers down Morrow's property.
Yeah, down, down the middle of the parking lot, basically, in some spots, pretty close.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Malanowski.
Thanks, Karen. So from your perspective on tying this into completing Main Street, is it from an aesthetic issue? Or does it have any other impacts if we don't go forward with the project?
Um, all right, so if, if we don't do the project at all, we'll, we could, we could basically go to their property line and then meet up on the other side of their property line, right? So what would happen is a lot of the underground work would be a problem because obviously we can't, we can't replace the water main under there. And we can't do the drainage under there. So that's, that's where we end up having, we won't be able to, we basically can't cross the tracks. And there's nowhere really to dispose of water on the west side of the tracks. We need to move it to the east. There is a pipe under there. Whether we can still attach to it, it's, it's an oldie. But if we can, you know, get to that and attach, that's fine. The biggest problem is, is that CSX plans on letting us and EverSource basically open, open trench there. So they're actually going to take the tracks out, replace their tracks. And while they, when they take it out, we're able to open trench, put everything back, and then they're actually going to put the tracks back. So that's, normally you have the core, you have to, you have to, you know, do a directional drilling and stuff. We don't have to do that this, for this project, which is excellent. So by, by having that, that access and that ability, that also obviously fixes the, the, the crossing for us. Because part of the problem with the crossing, if you look, a lot of the, a lot of the wood, I can't think what they're called, under the tracks is, is broken or is rotty and, and the tracks kind of bounce. And that's why the asphalt won't stay with it. So my understanding down there is that, again, with the, the reason the septic's problem is because the ground of our table is high, so obviously stormwater-wise, we do, you know, we're obligated to try to get that moving also. So we, we could, we could do the project on either side, leave those, leave the 30 feet and not, and not do anything in that section. It's just, I don't know that we could actually manage the, the drainage issues. And then the track is still a crap track.
So this would, so by doing the entire project, we're fixing two or three, maybe four issues that exist today?
Yes.
And do we know what, what the resistance is? Is it, is the, I assume losing parking is part of the issue? Is, is that the only issue?
I, so I believe that's part of it. I also, the last time I spoke to the owner, he was telling me that he thinks there used to be another set of tracks and that's what they were working off the wrong set of tracks. But it's, it's 33 feet from the center line of whatever tracks are there. So if there was another set and that's been given up, that's, then that right of way is gone, or, you know, CSX does not own that property anymore. This is, everything I've seen in all the records we can find talks about this set of tracks. One thing that might be kind of beneficial, but I don't know if this is even in the works still, but that Mass Electric piece property could become a neighbor, an area parking lot. And it could be done as part of this project if we own that property or if there was any work on that. Then that would, that would help with parking for everybody right there.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Karen, could you go back to the other drawing?
Yes. Oh, it's St. Mark's. Sorry.
All right, so again, starting on the southeast side where Lamy's is now, where that pinkish line is, which is 33 feet off the center line of the tracks.
This one?
Yep.
Okay.
As part of getting, as part of all this, there's nothing that the town needs to do to set a barrier at that location, correct? Based on the agreements in place?
Correct. We, we can put a barrier there if we, or, or bollards or, or whatever. If, if the Lamy property goes into an agreement with them, then they can, then they can put it up and they'll choose what they want. And at that point, I don't know whether.
So Lamy plans to put up whatever barrier slash fence, whatever will be there. The town does not need to do anything with that?
Correct.
Okay. And then in the northeast, the town does not need to do anything with that barrier? The, and again, it was my hope, I had a meeting with people from the Knights of Columbus. They had reached out to me and I met with them out there. And I had hoped that CSX would be willing to relax that 20-foot, the 25-foot requirement more than apparently they're willing to do. And if they've come to an agreement with the Knights at the 25 feet, then, then so be it. As part of our easement, are we then required to install something at that location? Or will the Knights be doing it?
So the, the Knights, the Knights are supposed to do it. If we want to help them, that's different. But the Knights are, according to CSX, the Knights now can put up whatever they want for a barrier.
And do you know how far back they are required to go?
Um, just to the property line, which is actually fairly short.
All right. And, and one thing with, with jersey barriers to keep in mind, because, I mean, they're, they're going to be tight with that driveway at the back corner of their building.
Yes.
And, you know, it, it's one thing to take a measurement off that line, but it, I mean, like, everybody's got to recognize that a jersey barrier is two feet wide at its base. So that could potentially be, you know, if you put the jersey barrier at the center of that, where that red line is, that's another foot that's coming off as well.
And that, and that's why I think they want to do a fence. And, and a fence makes sense for that because CSX is definitely, if you're, if you get the easement, they're more than willing to accept the fact that, great, you're recognizing that it's, it's our property. You're not going to go and try to like drive on it, right?
Yep.
Whereas that's why I think they want more of a jersey barrier or, or bollards along something otherwise, because they, they want to make sure that it's really not penetrable.
Yeah, all right. And at the southwest corner,
Yes.
that red line is currently still shown, the 33 feet off the center line?
Yes.
Because there's no agreement in place yet with the additional eight-foot easement, moving it back. And but, so CSX would be looking for the town to put up some sort of a barrier at that location as part of this easement agreement?
Yes, part of our easement agreement would be to put something there for them.
All right.
For CSX to keep their property.
Yeah, it just, well, you know, I, I wish, A, I don't want it to happen, and B, I wish CSX would do it and not put it on the town to do. But again, one of the other things to keep in mind here is, and I think people recognize it from the work that's been done on the other part of Main Street, is where these curb cuts are. Now, these are really things that are, that are literally set in stone and, and concrete. So they're, they currently have a 29-foot entrance in and out of their restaurant. And if we need to keep that curb, you know, the 33-foot feet, the 33 feet off of the center line of the tracks, that only leaves 20, 21 feet between the edge of the driveway entrance and the building itself, correct?
That's actually, i- i- it's to the other side of the curb cut.
To the other side of the curb.
Five feet to the building, but it's not close.
All right, all right, okay, got it, to that other curb cut, so.
Yes.
So that's going to be in impact as well. And all right. Those, I guess those are the only, the only questions that I have. I just.
I mean, whether the town can help as part of, as part of this design that we're putting forward, that we're sending to them. If, if, if we can't, if, if there is no easement in that quarter, I mean, you know, VHB can work as best as they can to try to get something and, and say, okay, well, here's how you can arrange your parking lot so that you still have some spots. Or if they got the easement, which I know still is not as much as they have now, which again, they are using someone else's property. So just to be clear, it's, it's like CSX owns that. It's not even like it's a right of way for us, right?
Yeah.
But if they, if that, if they get that eight feet, then again, it might be something that then VHB could say, well, if you've got the eight feet, you could do these things. Because once you get past the building, it, it does get wider. You, you know what I mean? Like, you, there's more space to be able to make your parking spots. And I, I, I think there's potential to work within that, within that parking lot to not really lose spots if they got the easement.
Yep. Hey, I'm not CSX, I'm not in the railroad business, but it just seems that I thought there could have been a little bit more flexibility on that 25-foot distance. I thought there could have been a little bit more flexibility on that 25 foot distance as well, but it doesn't seem that that's the case. Thank you.
Um. Karen, what's, what, what, what time factors are we dealing with here? Uh, you'd, you'd like to, you, you don't want to start it tomorrow because it's December, but, but i- in, in, you know, obviously. Funding would have to be in place. Um, you know, the weather would have to be cooperative, but if you wanted to. Wh- um, wh- when would you want to start this project?
Um, ideally, I would like to be able to. Know we're at the point that we can vet it over January, February, March. If we need to, whatever, we'll get, get everything set up. So that we could bid in spring and at least start the work in the fall. Um, or summer and fall. With the idea that, um, as far as the crossing goes, that's still going to be on CSX's time in their timeline, but, um. I know the national grid is, uh, not national grid, Eversource has been pushing them to, because they really want to, they've replaced their main everywhere except in that, that 30 foot easement right now. Or 35, but they have an easement for it. So there's a good chance that that would be a fair, fairly quickly, that the crossing would be one of the first things done.
Okay. And now I did, this really isn't a question for you. It's me thinking out loud. Um, but. I mean, there are, there are, there are basically three ways to, for the, for the town to get. Um. An easement, or at least three I can think of, or, or an easement or its equivalent. Number one, to actually. Take physical possession of the property. Um, I don't think we're going to be able to take property away from a railroad. Um. Um, number two is through the sort of agreement that CSX has floated with the, um, with the town. Um, and that is for them to give us an easement in return for us, um. Making what they, what they see as safety measures, and that's putting up the, um, the Jersey barriers or an equivalent. On that fourth piece of property. Again, the other three seem to have been addressed. It just, it strikes me that the, you know, there, there, there are. Public entities can't be completely stymied by private landowners. If there is a compelling public interest and I am, I am guessing. Um, I could be wrong about this, but I don't think I am, that the town, if the town needed an easement to work on. Anybody's property and that property owner weren't willing to voluntarily grant that easement. The town can take it by eminent domain. That costs the town money. Um, and do what, what is necessary from a, again, from a compelling public interest standpoint. Um, and you know, uh, compensate the, 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 the landowner for that. Now that would cost the town money. And this goes back to one of the early questions I asked. Um, I suspect that if the town took that route with CSX, that. You could be darn sure that there'd be a Jersey barrier on their property. Um, on that southwest corner. Um, cause that's a pretty aggressive step for the town to take. So. Again, we're not going to decide it tonight, but it strikes me, we need to, we need to have a. And one of our January meetings, we have to, we being the board have to have a pretty. Thorough discussion about this and, and what, um, what posture we want to take, both with respect to CSX. One of the landowners in that area and also the other landowner, and that'd be Moros. Um, because Karen, you've made a pretty good case that it's in the town's interest to address. For two, three, maybe more reasons, that area of Main Street and. Um. Uh. I think the town has to figure out what route it's going to take to address them. I don't think we're going to make that decision tonight, but we need to have a discussion about it pretty soon. Um. Do you have anything else, Karen?
No, nothing.
No. Anybody else on the board?
Can I just ask one other question, Marty?
Yeah.
So Karen, let me, let me, just so I'm, I'm clear on, on the, the curbing and everything we're doing. So. One of the advantages of getting the easement for CSX is they are actually, uh, we're putting additional curbing. Um, to protect the tracks and to, to. Afraid, to fray people from going onto the tracks. Is that correct?
Yes.
So. See, except CSX is getting some form of goodwill from the town to, um. As well as the town, obviously getting the opportunity to fix the drainage and do some of the things that we need to do. So I guess my only point is, is I think that the CSX is getting value from the town. They're not getting the, um. Easement for free, that, you know, that the town is, is making their tracks that much safer. And, um. I just think maybe we should consider that as well as we further the discussion. That's all. Thank you.
Uh, anyone else? Okay. Karen, um, thanks very much. Covered a lot of territory tonight.
Yep. Thank you. Appreciate it, guys.
All right. Have a good night. Yep. Bye bye.
Merry Christmas, if I don't see you. I hope I don't. Bye.
Okay. All right. Uh, on to Roman numeral four reports, chairman's report, really, really fast. Um, we're having, uh, I think the next one is the first, uh, first week of January. Um, you know, I'm Mark, Brian Valentine, myself, representatives from the schools. Um, and from advisory or, or, and capital are, uh, meeting on the FY 22 budget, you know, big surprise early in the process. The numbers are high. Um, you know, again, not much of a surprise for looking at fiscal year 22, the. The potential increase on paper, uh, at this point is, is higher than it's going to be and, um, but work is being done to. Um, I guess the, the, Mark, correct me if I'm wrong, we're still waiting for some final numbers or even some final preliminary numbers from the schools, correct?
Yes. All the, um, the school budgets usually come in probably, I think, second, second week of January is when we really have good numbers from them. I think the things they talked about. Um, the other day in our meeting were very preliminary and especially when they talked about the increase. Um, on the, uh, for the regional school, that really didn't take into account the enrollment. Um, shift with Northborough and Southwest. Obviously, you know, um, Northborough would bear the larger brunt of, of, of any increase. Usually that increase gets whittled down to make some accommodation for Northborough, which only makes our increase that much smaller.
So anyway, there's, there's, there's soft numbers at this point. The soft numbers are, are, are a higher increase than, than knock on wood. We ever even consider, um, and the process is ongoing. I suspect we'll have some firmer numbers after that meeting in January. All right. That's my report. Members' reports with much more detail than in the past. Uh, the rent and mortgage program, this is you, Chelsea?
Yes.
Yes. Okay.
So, um, so we closed out that program. Um, we had eight applications, seven of which qualified, um, for red or mortgage assistance. Um, and Carla and I reviewed, um, every piece of documentation, um, to ensure that it met all of the qualifications. Um, to, uh, for the program and we, uh, Carla reported to me today that, um, checks totaling $13,000. Were released to youth and family services to be distributed to those family, families, um, who applied. So. Um, Carla did a fantastic job of, um, working with youth and family services staff. Um, and myself to make sure that those checks got cut timely and, um, she will be working, um, on making sure that that portion. Is included in her 1230 report to get reimbursed from CARES. But again, we have the trust as a backup if something gets kicked out, but. Carla and I are fairly confident that, um, everything qualified. So, um, I'd like to thank her and, um, it's Christina did a great job from youth and family services. She's the new admin there and she coordinated a lot of the document retrieval and going back to make sure everything was accounted for. Um, and my second.
I'll, I'll just jump in. That's, I mean, that, that is great stuff. Um, terrific job by all you folks. Um, Lisa for, for. Starting the train, pushing it down the track and, and I, you know, it's nice to hear that seven families in Southborough are getting relief as a result of this. That's, that's. That's some of the best news we've had in a while. So, all right, on to number two.
Okay. Um, so I just wanted to report back after we had, um, the senior center here from the last meeting. I had the opportunity to touch base with Pam. And, um, work through doing some, um, coordinated efforts, um, with community outreach for seniors. Um, and we're excited to partner together to kind of brainstorm, um, COVID time and post-COVID on how we can, um, get the community connected. Um, between younger families and the seniors. Um, and we've had a blast caroling, um, for seniors around town. So, um. And they don't really care if you can't sing, which is great. So, um, that's been really fun. Um, and I know they've enjoyed it.
Marty, can I add one, one thing also to the, to the update on senior events?
Yep, absolutely.
Um, so I was, was fortunate enough, uh, to help Santa Claus. Um, when the seniors did their Christmas or holiday drive-through, uh, for people. So again, it's just another way that, that. Uh, the town is supporting and helping its seniors. It was, it was wonderfully successful and, and Santa was just always a joy to have around. So I will leave it at that. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, uh, Chelsea and, um, Lisa. Again, more good news. So. Um, next up, Board of Health Staffing. More good news, Mr. Sciver?
Yeah, of course. Um, at least hopeful news. Um. As folks who've been following this may know, uh, the Board of Health has been working hard to get organized and structured and staffed appropriately. To not only keep up with the, uh, contact tracing relative to COVID that they've been overwhelmed with, in fact, probably is going to get worse. As well as the vaccine, uh, distribution process, given the vaccines are now starting to become available. What do we need to do to make sure that we get an allocation of vaccines and are able to offer reasonable support to folks in town who may need it, who maybe have. Mobility issues, can't get to their doctor or whatever other places to get vaccine. Um, and, uh, Mark has organized a meeting, had a discussion with a variety of, uh, interested parties from Board of Health, uh, FIRE, uh, advisory. Uh, to talk about resources available and how we can put together a, a program and a process that will support this in a reasonable way. And I think there's been good progress made. Mark may want to amplify some of this in his report. But, um, I think we've identified a path to be able to get this done. And, um, a lot of people are working to try to confirm the various pieces of it. And, uh. Again, uh, we will keep people updated as we go along, but, uh, I think the real issue is that we have a plan. And a number of folks who are coordinating and cooperating, everybody's chimed in to be very productive and helpful with it. And, uh, so we'll. Keep working to make sure we get the right pieces in place to offer the right kind of support for the, for the community and all to do the COVID process here.
Mark, I know you've been, um, uh, shepherding this whole thing. So you want to add anything Sam had to say?
Yeah, I think, um, the shepherd needs a bigger stick. Um, but no, it actually, it was, it was a good, it was a really good conversation today. Um, two things I want to bring up. Um, and, and again, it's kind of interesting how we find out this information. So during the, the meeting today, um, we were notified. Um, we had already been notified that the public health nurse was going to be resigning her position. Um, it turns out sometime in February. Um, also were notified during the meeting today that, um, um, uh, Mr. Pazinski, the public health director is going to be resigning his position. Um, and, um, was, um, made to understand from, um, um, from the chair of Board of Health that. Mr. Pazinski's focus, excuse me, has been environmental health and environmental health and public health really don't, you know, um, uh, don't mix. Um, and, and in this case, right now, we need somebody with public health experience. And so, um. Um, uh, Ms. Woodford was, is, is talking about a plan, um, to try and bring on, um, you know, an acting director. Or somebody who's got that public health experience who can help to coordinate and lead these efforts. Um, you know, for, um, for vaccination clinics, um, for the, uh, interim period where we're doing a lot of contact tracing. And kind of providing the guidance that the public health nurses and the per diem nurses need. Um. Uh, I, I think we have, um, by the, by the end of the meeting, I think, you know, and, and Sam, um, was, was, um. Was right about that, that I think we have a path forward. Um, we're going to put together, you know, a plan. And outlining the various needs and the pieces of things that need to be addressed for each need. And then, um, we're going to try to have a whiteboard session between now and Christmas Eve. And try to work on, um, assigning those responsibilities and who needs to put together what pieces. Um, obviously time is of the essence and the one piece that I can take back to that process from tonight. Is when Representative Dykema said that the plan for vaccine distribution for essentially general public. Um, which is a pretty much where the municipalities and local, um, distributions are going to get involved. Majority of that is going to be done through CVS and, and Walgreens. And, um, we had talked about looking to establish relationships. Um, with, with one, um, with one of those, um, to, uh, you know, to see if, if there is something that could be done here locally. Uh, so those outreaches are being made as well. So I think we've got a number of avenues we're pursuing, um, and putting things together. It's. Hopefully we'll have, uh, much more to report at the next meeting in January.
Um, okay. I think that is it for members' reports. Town administrator report, a number of items. Mark?
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to do what you did earlier from Ms. Gallagher. I'm going to go in reverse because I think the most, the most conversation is going to be on the first piece. So I'll start, I'll start at the bottom. Um, actually I'm going to start with an item that's not on there and just, um, give a, um, give, uh, kudos to, uh, the recreation director, uh, to Tim Davis. Um, um, partway through the Capitol planning meeting last night, he texted me and let me know that his two recreation lighting projects had been unanimously approved, approved by planning board. Um, so kudos to him. Um, it's been a long process, but you know, at the end of the day, he got where he needed to be. The permitting is completed. And now he can focus on the bidding and the construction pieces and, um, hopefully that will, um, um, move rapidly, um, with the construction piece. As soon as, um, as soon as spring comes around. I know that seems like a long way at this point, but, but, um, you know, that's in the pipeline for him. Uh, update on the common flagpole. Um, you had received some plans. Um, had forwarded them to you. We received them through the building commissioner, um, from Crown Castle. Um, for replacement flagpole, 110 foot flagpole, 111 foot, if you count the gold ball at the top. Um, and, um, the one comment that I got back, um, immediately from, um, one board member. Was why is the pole moving 15 feet, um, from its current location? And, um, we have been trying to get an answer from Crown Castle. Today they submitted new plans. Uh, and they are going to get, they are going to move the flagpole because they need to put in new footings. The structural analysis is that they can't, it's not going to support, um, the pole based on current, current regulations requirements. Um, however, the, um, landscaping, um, the wall that is now around that pole, um, the existing pole, that is all going to. Be moved or recreated around the new pole. Uh, and so that, those plans just came in. Um, you know, uh, late, late this afternoon, I took a quick look at them and I was able to garner at least that bit of information. So that's where we are with that.
Mr. Healy, if I may? So, and not to, uh, so that was my comment that I had provided. So there is the uplighting going to be moved and all that stuff as well?
Yes. Everything's going to be moved.
All right. Cause it, it really did seem as though. Whoever put that plan together was not cognizant of the area surrounding the existing pole and all the. Efforts that had been done to make that base nice and the lighting up to it towards the flag, et cetera. So as long as it's. That, that would need to be recreated in my mind, or. The new foundation footing pointed into that existing area. So. Thank you.
So yeah, they're going to move, they're going to move everything, Mr. Shay. So that's the first piece on, on the flagpole. Um, the other two items are really notification pieces. Reminders were sent out from Town Accountant on the CARES Act, making sure everybody understands the closeout for expenses is December 30th. That notification went out to everybody earlier today. And I've already seen some responses coming back that yes, we'll have everything when you need it. And I believe that CARES is going to start doing some of their reconciliations and, and checks to assure that the funding is properly applied in January. And so you know, we're not quite sure yet what some of the requests to FEMA and some of the requests to CARES are going to look like. We haven't heard back yet from FEMA on some of the answers as to whether or not the requests are applicable or not. If they're not applicable to FEMA, then we carry them over to, to the, to the CARES Act funding request. So that's going to be a little bit of a moving target as, as we get more information. Second piece, notice went out for the, the perk testing at the Art Center. We sent out a butters notices, 300-foot radius, so about 44 people. And did special notification to the two departments in the Art Center and and Ms. Gallagher is going to be, is, is working to make that happen as soon as possible. The snow is not really as much of an issue. It's when the ground starts to freeze to, to a little bit of depth. So we still have a little bit of a window and she's working to make sure that we can get done what we need to within that window. Finally, Mr. Healy, you know, we had talked a little bit about COMCAN and our community host agreements and payments that are a requirement of the community host agreement. If, if you, if you're familiar with the host agreement that we have with COMCAN, there, there is an overarching payment that they make to the town, 3% of gross, and that happens in December and June. And it happened after they were in business for one year. So it's, it's, it's the period after they've been open and in business for one year. Moving forward, it's every six months we receive a check, which is, you know, somewhere between $40,000 and $50,000 for each, for each check. When the business, I'm going to see if I get this right. When the business was opened, there was a $15,000 payment that was made to the town that was credited against their first 3% of gross payment. A year after they had, when they'd been open for a year, there was another payment that was made to the town that was also credited against the, against the 3% payment. And then in the second year, following the second year, and then every subsequent year, they were required in the CHA to make a $50,000 payment to help, to help to fund police initiatives, school resource officer, mental health programs, things of that nature. And that is the issue that we received the letter on that was forwarded to the Board a little while ago from COMCAN's attorney that, you know, given the new direction of the Cannabis Control Commission and legislation that has been moving, you know, through the House, is that anything above the 3% is not, is not a lot. That's really your cap for the fee that you can put in these agreements. And so I had done some work and, and Ms. Esposito in our office had, had done some work as well. And Ms. Hale had asked some questions of legislative staff up at the MMA Office to understand how other communities may be dealing with this. And it really was very interesting to look at some of this stuff. First of all, from a legislative piece and from a, you know, from the MMA's approach, they're not hearing a lot of communities that are complaining that they're not getting their payments per their community host agreements. So that was, that was one piece and you'll understand why in the second part. So Ms. Esposito had, had called around and taken a look at some community, community host agreements. I took a look at, at a number of community host agreements. And one fun fact with all of this, Uxbridge has 17 community host agreements. So it's, it's, you know, a tremendous amount and it's dispensary, it's cultivation, you know, I, they run the whole gamut. All of these community host agreements almost to a, a community focused on the 3% of gross payment. That is really what they are getting. If there is any additional payment and there are very few and far between, they're offset. So you, you know, that money is then deducted from the 3% payment. So there is nothing additional above and beyond the 3%. There are some agreements that do have language in there, such as Northampton. I believe Great Barrington may have had something like that. And there were a couple of others, Salisbury. They have language in there that the the marijuana dispensaries or growing facilities, the companies voluntarily and are willing to make a donation. And usually the amount is somewhere between, you know, is, is around 10,000. I've seen some in here as high as 25 to a local charity of the town's choosing, to, you know, something like that. They specifically says the money does not come to the town at all. You know, the money goes someplace, someplace separate. And so, so really, you know, no one else has really had an issue with this because everybody else's language seems to be staying within that 3% cap for the fee. And, and any other, any additional piece that may be there is either outside of the town and is a voluntary piece to, you know, a local charity, some other designated place, or a fee is, is, is deducted from any 3% payment.
Mark? I mean, it's interesting because two things are conflicting here. Number one is contract law, where there's an agreement. There's an agreement between two voluntary parties who, who signed that agreement. Presumably that should stand unless somehow the, it's, it's negated by an act of the, of the legislature. And I, I mean, did, did, in terms of any, in terms of the, the canvassing that, that's been done, was there any sense from, from, God, I'm not sure it would have been blindsiding Representative Dykema and Senator Eldridge, but I'm not aware of any legislation that basically negates a voluntary, our voluntary agreement with our, our Route 9 cannabis provider.
So the agreement, when we did the agreement, the agreements are not voluntary. The agreements were a requirement for the, the cannabis company to be able to, to locate in town and to do it. So it really wasn't-
The agreement was, right, they, in order, but that's still voluntary. They could have chose not to be here. I mean, they voluntarily chose to be in Southborough. They voluntarily chose to execute an agreement and they voluntarily chose to execute an agreement that had that provision in it. They, they could have, they could have said no to any of those things and they'd be in Hudson now or wherever.
Sure.
So.
Marty, if I could?
Yeah, Brian.
As one of the board members who negotiated that, what appears to be an outstanding agreement on behalf of the town of Southborough now, COMCAN themselves gave us example host agreements to go by. I haven't gone back and studied exactly all the, you know, the information that we had at the time. But they would see, I don't recall inventing that $50,000 payment in addition to the fifth, to the 3%. So that may have been in existence in some of the examples that they gave, gave us. But again, it's, it's signed by both parties, you know, so I'm, uh, I'm certainly not willing at this point to, to just let it go based on what COMCAN's lawyer says, so.
And, and I'm not suggesting, you know, and I'm not suggesting one way or the other, whether it's, it's not worth pursuing or it's something that we absolutely should pursue. You know, I, I simply wanted to provide the context with a lot of these, these other agreements and, you know, and what we're seeing and then trying to find out if there's people that are similarly situated and how they're addressing that issue. But I've, I've yet to find somebody that was apples to apples.
Okay. Anyone else with any comments or questions for Mark?
The only comment I'll make, Marty, if I may, is I, I, I agree with, with Brian. I'm certainly not willing to just walk away from it either. I, I agree with, with, also with you, Marty, as well. I mean, a contract is a contract. And whether or not what someone else in another town is doing or isn't doing, you know, a deal was signed with the town of Southborough. So, and it allowed them to be able to do business in Southborough. So I'm, I support what Brian said as well.
Marty?
Yeah, you're unmuted. Sam, go ahead.
A quick question. I was interested in, I think it was your comment at prior meeting about this, that clearly there got to be attorneys who specialize in cannabis law. And maybe getting some input from somebody who has seen this process play out elsewhere, if it has, would be a useful input, not to spend a lot of money on it, but you could probably have an information session or something fairly inexpensively to say, what's going on here? Can you give us some high-level advice about possible next steps?
Well, that was, that was one of the reasons Mr. Purple and I talked about reaching out to other communities and find out, finding out how they were handling it. And it sounds like they're not, either because they don't have to or because they've chosen not to. So yeah, I, I guess, Mark, and it's interesting with what Brian said about the, when it was negotiated. I guess we, we don't have to put it on for the next, next, for the next meeting, but maybe is, could you collect or have someone collect whatever historical information we have? Again, before we start, you know, lawsuits are expensive, litigation's expensive, you know, let's, let's find out exactly what our footing is in terms of, of disagreement. And then whether it's, you know, Mr. Cipriano or, or a, or Cannabis Council. I mean, I think at some point, once we've, once we've sort of corralled all that data and information, make a determination about whether or not we want to you know, invest resources fighting this battle. And the answer may be yes. Again, I was, I was hoping that there was going to, that there were going to be some fellow travelers, but it sounds like there may not be. So.
Key question is, can we rely on clear thinking from a cannabis lawyer?
I'm still amazed. I am amazed at the volume. I mean, and that's only a medical dispensary. I'm amazed at the volume of, of revenue that goes through. It's like $20,000 a day. That's a lot of money.
You can drive by there at, you know, at, you know, anytime, you know, during the day, even on a weekend. And, you know, you won't see more than four or five cars.
I know, Mark. It sounds like you've been doing that.
That's right, Mark.
You know what? You know, because I'm trying to, I'm trying to figure out, I'm trying to figure out, you know, where, you know, it's really busy, but, you know, I, I remember when we originally had the tour and everything in that, and that, and that people could get a 30-day supply. So it's not like they're going to have to come back, you know, real frequently. We had one that opened up on Route 9 in Shrewsbury and that place is busy. And it's a, it's a, it's a recreational. And so, yeah, you just, you don't see the traffic, but when, you know, you saw the reports that I sent you that came along with the, you know, with the latest, with the latest check. Yeah, they, they're doing, they're doing quite well.
All I know is there's always a line when I'm there.
No comment. All right. Mark, is that it for your report?
That's it.
Roman numeral five, consent agenda. We're going to fly through this, right? Are there any holes?
A and F.
A and F. Is that it? All right. I move that we approve items B, C, D, and E of the December 15th consent agenda.
Second.
Discussion, none. Ms. Brascio?
Aye.
Ms. Malinowski?
Aye.
Mr. Shea?
Aye.
Mr. Stivers?
Aye.
And Mr. Healy is aye. It's unanimous. A, open session minutes.
Uh, that was me. So on the November 24th, minutes row 171. I just want to reword that sentence to say she asked Mr. Purple to revise the minutes to include the second agenda item and the motion, the second and unanimous vote affiliated with it.
So that one sentence?
Yes. And Kate, I can email you that change and that way you don't have to write down what I just said.
If you want to email that to Katie, that would be great because I know she's feverently trying to figure out what you just said and she's-
That's fine. Yep.
I know. When you get to the fourth clause, I lost it. So it was a long sentence. Uh, okay. Is that it or?
Yeah, that was it.
Okay. Uh, and while, while we're at it, F as well?
Yeah, I just need to abstain from that.
Okay. So, all right. Well, let's, let's take them individually then. I'll move to approve consent agenda item. A, open session minutes from August 28, November 24, and December 1.
Second.
As amended.
As amended. The November 24th, as amended. Let's see. Moved and seconded discussion, none. Ms. Brascio?
Aye.
Ms. Malinowski?
Aye.
Mr. Shea?
Aye.
Mr. Stivers?
Aye.
And Mr. Healy is aye. Consent agenda item F, I also have to recuse from. So Ms. Brascio, it's all yours.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to accept then approve the bond anticipation notes for the fire truck and bin boiler?
So moved.
Is there a second? Any discussion? Mr. Shea?
Aye.
Mr. Stivers?
Aye.
Ms. Brascio? Aye. Geez, I was waiting for someone to do it. And Mr. Healy and Ms. Malinowski abstain. Thank you.
All right. Roman numeral six. A, EDC Residential Info Packet. And we've got that, we've got that in our packet.
We do. Do you want me to give you a little context on that, Marty?
I was going to say, yeah, Lisa, you've got the best, the, the, the best feel for what the context is for this thing. So why don't you take it?
Just, just briefly. So, um, EDC had put together a package that they were hoping to be able to share with the businesses and the residents downtown. They had gone over it. They had approved it. And then Ms. Conley had reached out to me as, as I was liaison for the Board and, and wanted approval from me as well. And I felt that this was something that the Board should discuss. And if there's any edits or something, it should come from the full Board. I wasn't comfortable doing it. So I do have edits. So Marty, I don't know how you want to go through this. If you want me to continue and talk about some of my concerns and, or do you just want to kind of go around the other way? It doesn't matter to me and I can go last. Totally up to you.
What is, not, not this, the, the, the substance of the, of the document, what's the plan for it? Do you, do you have a sense?
So the, the plan was that they were going to distribute it to businesses and residents. As they were going through the downtown initiative process, at, at the very back of it, you'll also see was the current version, which is now, actually, Mark has inserted the final version in it. But it's, it's just to give guidance as to, you know, what, what the EDC has been working on and how they got to kind of where they got to. And actually, I think Julie's here as well. Ms. Conley is in the attendees. So she could probably speak to it better, but, but my understanding was, Marty, it was, it was to provide some history and some background to residents and businesses in the downtown, all having to do with the downtown initiative, obviously.
Okay. And I guess, why don't we bring Julie in then? Because the timing of this is, is I guess something I want to get a better feel for.
Yeah. Hi.
Hi, Julie. How are you?
I'm good. Thanks, Marty.
So what is the, what is the, what is the plan for this document?
So our, our thinking was, you know, we, we just, we want to make sure that there's, you know, transparency and a lot of people have questions. And when we're talking about some of these changes, you know, that, that we're, we're talking about for zoning, you know, we know from all the different public- you know, we know from all the different public forums we've done over the last couple of years that, you know, people, there are a lot of residents in the downtown particularly and a lot of businesses there. And, um, you know, there's not always, you know, unless you're attending all the meetings, there's not always a great way to know, you know, how this might affect you. And, um, so I think we just wanted to put out some information um, about, you know, what, what was going on with the zoning, um, you know, obviously a lot of this information is already publicly available anyway. Um, it was just to put it in one place and, and share it with the residents. I think our plan was actually, you know, if we have a, a packet that, that you guys approve to, you know, literally put hard copies in or mail hard copies to, um, people in, in the downtown neighborhoods. Or, you know, have them, have this available in, in, you know, public places for people to, to see.
Okay. So it'd be something that'd be done in the next weeks. It would, it'd be done in conjunction with the planning board meetings that presumably would happen. What's, what, what is the?
Yeah.
How does it intersect with those?
Yeah. As far as timing, yeah, I think that's probably right. I mean, it's something we started talking about a couple of weeks ago and for, for a brief period there, we were thinking, oh, maybe we should put this out before the joint meeting that we had with planning and, 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 um, and, and, and you guys, um, back a couple of weeks ago, just so people knew what was going on and those who were interested would be able to come and, you know, listen in and, and comment. Um, because, you know, obviously it affects the people right in the downtown the most. So that was sort of our thinking, but the timing for that didn't work well. Um, but yeah, I think, I think the timing would be great if we could, if that, we could get a product that we could get approved. Um, you know, and if, if things go well tonight, and, um, then there would be the, the public hearings. Um, I think the first one would be January 11th with the planning board. Um, so, you know, leading up to that, just letting people know that it's coming. Um, so those who want to participate and comment, you know, have some background information, have some visuals, um, as to, you know, what area it is we're talking about and things like that. And clear, and, and, and would, you know, obviously love to hear your guys' comments. This isn't something that, you know, we want to just throw out there. We want this to be something that is, is good and accurate and representative of what we're trying to do. Um, that gives residents more information.
Lisa, I think you, you've been more intimately involved in this than, than the rest of us. I actually think it makes sense for you to go first.
Okay.
Because I think you're like, I think you're likely to cover ground that other folks might have been thinking about or otherwise. So, so why don't you start off and, and, um, we'll go from there.
So overall, I, I, I thought that the document itself was, was very well done and very well put together. I did have, um, some concerns. And the first was on page seven. It's identified redevelopment sites. And, um, I, I've heard feedback on this as well. And I'm not the only person I know that has concerns. For instance, address number three on this is, is Three Park Street, and that's not in the downtown village, downtown village district. That's in a residential B. So when we're talking about the downtown initiative, I, I'm not quite clear as to why we would include a parcel that doesn't sit within the, the zoning that we're looking to change. Um, Julie, I'll go through, I have four of them of the eight, and, and then maybe if you want to address them. Uh, Five Park Street is only a third in the downtown Business Village District. Um, in looking at the, the town GIS maps, number six has a stream that runs through the middle of it. So I don't know how much redevelopment could go there. And number seven that's on this, um, is tied up in court, and I don't think it should be included on here until that resolution is reached. I, um, so on, on that page, um, Julie and I'm happy to go through them again. So it's, it's four, five, six, and seven as to why they would be on this map as redevelopment sites.
Um, I, I think those are valid points. And I think, um, um, you know, this is, this is why this is good to have, um, to have a discussion about this. Um, those are all absolutely valid points. I think, you know, those areas for possible redevelopment, um, those were identified, um, you know, back two years ago in the ULI report. So there's the downtown Business Village District as currently defined in the current, current zoning bylaw. Um, and there's, you know, and, and there's the, the bigger, and, you know, over the course, the last couple of years, we've gone through iterations of, you know, how we're approaching this. And a- as of this point, you're right, we're, we're looking at, you know, specifically, um, how to change the terms of the current bylaw with the current boundaries and to the extent that um, some of the properties that had been identified for potential redevelopment um, fall outside of the boundaries. I understand why that could be, um, confusing. Um, so that's certainly something that we could, you know, I can revisit with the committee and see how we could either not address that, you know, take that out as a concept or address it in, you know, in a different way because I, I, I agree that's a, that's a valid point.
Yeah. And Julie, I just, my concern was I didn't want there to be confusion on.
Yep.
Somebody saying, well, why, again, I'm asking the question and other people I know have asked the question as well. So um, I think if we're clear and concise on the information that we're giving to people and, and, um, and I understand why three probably, uh, three and four were probably on there because it is on Park Street. And, and the zoning for that piece is so wonky downtown, if I can read the word wonky, but I guess I did. So, um, you know, so I, I think for transparency, as you said, I think it's very important. So I, I would suggest um, three coming off because it isn't included in the downtown village, village district. I mean, you could certainly leave six on there, whether it's what or not. You know, you know, times change. You just never know. But I, I would like to see, uh, seven come off at this point as well. Uh, that's my suggestion. I'd like to hear Marty with the board thinks, and then I can move on to other pages.
Yeah, I, I, I know what I think, but I'll, I'll, I'll let other folks weigh in first. Uh, why don't we go to Ms. Malinowski?
I agree. It shouldn't, uh, be in there right now.
Brian?
Uh, I agree. Do we need the, the page at all? Could the page go?
Now, that's, I, I, I just take the page out. I don't, I'm not sure it adds mu- adds much to what we're trying to accomplish here.
Nope. I think that would be great if the board was in agreement with that. Yep. Because the map itself is in there. So the, the sites that are in the district are already included further within. So, okay. Um.
Sam, I jumped over you. You were nodding though.
Yeah, pull the page.
Okay.
So one of the themes through, throughout this document as well, it's on page nine, it's on, um, other pages. Um, is, well, I'll, I'll go to page nine first, I guess. One of the visions for downtown again has a property that's tied up in a lawsuit and what a vision may or may not be. And I, I think that picture shouldn't be there. It's the picture on the right. Um, on the top on the right. So, um, again, I, I worry where that's, that is, is in court right now, that, um, you know, we're, we're presenting a vision on that site when it's totally outside of our scope.
Um, yeah, duly noted. And again, I mean, so as far as the, the renderings go, um, you know, obviously they were, you know, what, what we, our intent there was to, uh, ha- have a visual of, of what sort of was in our brains based on, um, what we thought the residents wanted, based on the feedback we had received from the survey a few years ago and from our four or five different public forums that we'd had. Um, we wanted to, you know, kind of put, put an image to paper to, to show what we thought, what, what our vision was. Um, so that was the point of, of that. Clearly those aren't specific buildings that we have plans for. Um, but, but your, your point is taken to the extent that, 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 um, one particular rendering is of a site that is currently in litigation. If, um, I understand that, you know, if, if we want to just not address that issue right now.
Yeah. So here, here was, here was my concern on this, Julie, was that it's, it's, there's other pages in the document and I'll get to them. Um, the last thing we would want would be for the public to see these documents and other documents that may or may not have gone out and think that the downtown initiative is for a specific project that's tied up in court. So, um, that would be a concern to be changing the zoning. Again, that interpretation, I'm not saying that's the case. I'm just saying, you know, that interpretation can be made and I think we need to be very cognizant and very careful of that. Um, you know, in what we do distribute to the public, um.
Yes, certainly. And that's certain, that's certainly not the case. Our, you know, the downtown initiative started, you know, long before there was even a, any issue or, or with, with a specific site. Um, so, you know, and it's certainly, you know, much larger in scope than any one specific site. Uh, and I think any, you know, any, anything we've done in the past three years addressing this has been much larger than any one specific site. I don't think, you know, but, but for, for the sake of, um, you know, clarity and avoiding any confusion, then certainly I'm happy to remove any specific references.
At least if that's already been out there, I guess. I don't understand the concern about that. I mean, that's not something we're saying we're going to do there. It's a lot illustrious piece. So why would that be involved with the court things at all?
Because you're, you're, sorry, Sam. So.
For quite a while.
My concern is you're, you're, the, the board is putting out a document because it's a board sponsored article. And, um, again, I'm not comfortable. And, and again, the, the board can certainly do what they want, Sam. I, I'm not comfortable with an interpretation being given through various documents that the, the, the board, um, is doing or the appearance of the board supporting changes for the downtown based on one parcel. And, um, I certainly don't want to go to town meeting and have to defend that. And if it's as easy as taking out some pictures or reference further back in, Sam, there's, there's a page dedicated to three different drawings to what it, what it could look like or how it could look. And it's, it's that corner. And where it's tied up in court, you know, um, I've had people in the last couple of days say to me since the packet came out, so what are we going to do next? Is the Board of Selectmen going to change the zoning for Park Central so a project can be allowed? Again, I, I just, I think we need to be careful. And that's all I'm saying. And again, there are five of us that sit on this board and others could feel very differently than I. Completely respect that and, and whatever direction the board wants to go. I just think how it's viewed by the public, we need to be very careful.
I, I certainly respect your opinion on that, Lisa. I guess it doesn't concern me. So.
Okay.
Marty, if I could weigh in on that?
Yeah, Brian, go ahead.
So I agree with Lisa on this, and I think that we should minimize the number of renderings that are out there. One of the things that we went through on Main Street was previous ideas on that project, previous iterations on that project that got posted up in various places all across town. And then when the project that was ultimately built came out, if there was something different, we had to spend a lot of time explaining differences between them. So I, I think I'd tend to agree with Lisa on this and I would lean away from trying to show too many renderings there, kind of plant some, a vision in someone's mind. And if someone proposes something different on the site, like, oh, this is what was proposed here before. I like that better. Let's, let's do that. So.
I'm sorry, Brian, just to clarify, or do you want us to remove all the renderings or just, just the one?
You know, I.
That was getting to another point I had, Brian, as I, as I went further back.
Yeah. See, I've got, I've got a broader point on that. Um, Chelsea, do you want, do you want to weigh in?
Um, I agree with Brian and Lisa. I think the almost less is more here and, um, not pigeonhole ourselves. I mean, if we're, if we're publishing that, this from, you know, EDC did a nice job putting this together, but essentially the Board of Selectmen are stamping this to go out to the public. I, I don't think that we should pigeonhole ourselves into, um, defending what it, what it's going to look like because we may, may or may not have control over the actual physical appearance. And I also don't think that we should be putting some out, something out there that is tied up in court.
And I'm, I, I don't want to say I'm not concerned about the whole court thing, um, in terms of, 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 of putting out a rendering for that. I just, I could, just because I don't have to get there, I, this this feels like a sales document to me. Um, and, um, um, you know, anything that is, um, the, the one thing that, 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 or one thing that I've learned, you know, in the last three months or four months, whatever it's been dealing with this, is this is, this is dry, dry stuff. And I understand that, 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 you know, taking the dryness of, 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 um, changing zoning and turning it into renderings, but a lot of those renderings we could do right now. I mean, a lot of that stuff you could do without changing the zoning. Um, and so, I mean, really what we're talking about is a, is a, is a, um, you know, is a zoning undertaking. And, um, yeah, the ultimate goal is to, um, you know, from what Karen Gallagher was talking about earlier is to, is to, is to generate a downtown that, that aesthetically is more attractive, that functions better, that does all those things that, that, that every survey has said people would like to see in downtown. But again, most, a lot of those renderings, you could build them right now. Um, and so they're not, it's not like we, we can't have this now, but we could if we did the zoning. Actually, we could have that now. Um, if somebody wanted to develop a property a certain way. Um, so it just, it feels, it feels like it, it, it bring, going back to CSX, it sort of gets us off the rails of what we're trying to accomplish here, which is to get some very dry zoning done, which gives us an opportunity to have, um, you know, different types of buildings and, and, uh, that, that we can't have right now. If we, if we did that and, and showed this is what we can do now, this is what we could do then, that'd be one thing, but that's not, this is a sales document and it feels, um, it feels unnecessary to me. So I guess that's my longer than I intended point.
So you'd distribute the zoning bylaw, but not the, uh, slides, basically.
I, I do an awful lot of this. I would take out the, the, um, I mean, this is good information. I mean, I think it's very, very helpful information. And I, and I like the way it's, 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 um, it's accumulated and presented. I just think it's, and that's why it's good. But then all of a sudden you veer off with some, with, with, with renderings that, um, I, I think, uh, confuse, confuse the presentation. That's my view.
Um, so just, can I just, one more thing, and, and I'm, I'm not disagreeing with, with, with this approach at all. Um, but just to be clear, so one, these documents are already out there. We've been, you know, the EDC uh, put these together, I think about a year and a half ago, and we've had, they've been at our forums and, and the intent was not to be salesy. Um, the intent was more to show, and, and again, we always, always caveat it with, this is not anything that we're saying is going to happen or could happen or that we can even make happen. We're just showing the potential and, and, and the intent is almost to show what it's not going to be more than what it is because um, I think, you know, there were, we heard comments from people saying, oh, you're going to put in, you know, Applebee's and drive-throughs or, you know, it, just to, to show that there are ways that you could put um, buildings in the downtown that fit aesthetically and, um, reach the goals that we, um, want to reach by changing the zoning. And, and, and I, and I understand your, your point, um, Marty, that, you know, theoretically, these buildings could be put in there without changing zoning, but they wouldn't be because, because with the current zoning bylaws, um, we're, we're not getting any, anyone who's able to come in and, and do this kind of work um, under the current zoning bylaws. So, um, but, but, but your point is taken and, um, and, and I'm, I'm fine if, if you think that, um, not having the renderings in this particular document, um, is a better approach. That's okay by me.
Yeah. And I think what was done before is perfectly reasonable because of, but, but right now there is a, there, there is a finite, you know, bounded thing, a, a, a proposed zoning article. And anything, I, I don't want to distract from that. I mean, that's going to be a, that's going to be a sell that, that, um, um, hopefully we have the opportunity to make the town meeting to, and, and the seller is it improves, it gives us flexibility, et cetera, et cetera, as opposed to we'll get this building. I, I just, again, I've got no problem with what was done before with visioning and the like, but now we've got a, we've got a, a very specific um, um, uh, proposed, um, article that we are going to try to get passed. And, and I, anything that deviates from. um, um, uh, proposed, um, article that we are going to try to get passed. And, and I, anything that deviates from that, I think is, i- has got the potential for harm.
Okay. And, and one, one other comment, if I can add to that is, is Julie too, is I, I, I think the renderings are great and I, and I agree with you that it, it shows what could be, but there's another side to what could be as well. And, you know, even based on the discussions we had, I mean, we're, we're talking by doing things by right now with this document that ha- have never been done before, you know, for, for allowing more development. But someone could counter and, and say, I could put up a 24,000 square foot if I had that, that size lot, office building by right, you know, in, in someone's backyard potentially. So again, I, 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 I'm always cautious on the renderings, a- as Brian said, you know, the last thing you want is somebody to say, well, you told me this and we got this. So, um, I think we all have vision to be able to do something downtown. It, it, it's just the, the documents and how we get there. Is all, and how it's, how it's, how it's sold. So, that being said, um, I, I was fine with the majority of the document. Um, I, going back into, um, like I said, under appendix A, you know, that, that's the map. I think that's, that's great. It's, it's good vision for everyone. I think it's, it's when we got to again, um, appendix B and the visions of downtown. So I don't believe the, the Southborough Arms or the high school that are shown here are even within the downtown Business Village. So I, I was concerned about, you know, and again, I understand the history and what Southborough used to look like. But as you went through these, again, one particular parcel does, does show up in these that, that again is tied up. Um, as you go back through, like I said, there was a, a page dedicated to showing three different renderings of how it could look. So if we're not doing the renderings, you know, that, that actually takes away some of my comments. Um, because I had comments on, on another page that it showed greenscape and, and, you know, places for people to potentially picnic and, and, you know, cobblestone walkways and, and I don't necessarily vision that with the zoning that we discussed and, and we did. Um, you know, we talked about short setbacks and whatnot. And I guess it would depend on the lot, you know, and, and the developer and how much he wants to develop. So, um, those were some of the concerns I had on those pictures, but it sounds like that's a moot point that I just wanted to, um, put that out there. Um, I also on page 25, um, in 2018, it references that, uh, EDC, uh, supported two East Main Street proposed mixed use building. Again, it's, it's, I, I, I think references to that should be taken out of this document. Um, I don't know what the board thinks about that, but again, but again, that was page 25 under 2018.
I guess I feel differently about that. That happened.
Okay.
Yeah, that.
Okay.
You know, right? That did happen.
It did happen. It did happen. Okay. That's fine. That's fine. Um, and then that basically takes me to the back to, you know, um, we'd be inserting the, the, the district. So tho- those were the concerns that I had. Um, and it sounds like we, we've addressed most of them. So, um, again, Marty, I'll, I'll toss it back to you for any other comments anyone else may have had.
Well, you know what I would, I would do and, and you, you and Julie have been working together, you know, um, uh, with Judy Barrett and others.
Yeah.
Well, I, I am, I am comfortable because, because, and I think, I think, um, um, uh, at least the majority, maybe everybody shares the concerns. Um, and I'm fine, and I'll make the motion, I'm fine moving that, that, because we don't meet again for three weeks. That, that, um, uh, I'll move that, that on behalf of the board, we give Lisa the authority to sign off on the, um, any edits to the document before it goes out. Are you comfortable with that, Lisa?
I am. Yep.
Second.
Discussion? None?
Quick discussion.
Raj, oh, there is, Mr. Stivers.
One comment. Uh, I, I think that, uh, I've worked hard to try to resist the urge to wordsmith. And I, because I think the most important thing is getting this moving, getting it out. So while I don't share the same view about the renderings and so forth, I'm not strongly in favor of them necessarily as opposed to keeping this process moving. So I'm fine with, uh, asking Lisa and Julie to do whatever needs to be done to get this out and available to the public as quickly as possible. I think that's very helpful to inform people sooner rather than later. So I support the motion.
Okay. I, uh, Julie, I asked Lisa, I didn't ask you. Are you fine with that?
Absolutely. No, I appreciate everyone's feedback. I'm, I'm glad that you had the chance to, to weigh in on this before we sent it out. Um, you know, this is a, a really collaborative effort, effort and, um, your points are well taken. Um, just one point of clarification, Lisa, did you, you're, you, you said you're okay with the historical renderings, just not the vision renderings, right?
Um, well, I had, I had concern on the historical, but, um.
Julie, you and Lisa can work that out. We're about to move on to another agenda item.
Great.
And Ms. Braccio, we've, we've moved and seconded.
All right.
Uh, Ms. Malinowski.
Hi.
Is Mr. Shay there? He's not. Mr. Stivers.
Hi.
Mr. Healy is, aye. So that passes.
Uh, hands raised out there. I don't know if people want to talk about this one or not. Post vote comments. Mimi and Marika.
And Kristen of all.
Kristen now has, okay.
All right, um, Vanessa, can you bring in Ms. Lutrell? Actually, bring in everybody and we'll just go first with Ms. Lutrell. Everybody's got their hand raised.
Good evening.
Hi, Mimi.
Um, just, I wanted to comment on, um, if statement that the EDC supported the mixed use building on two East Main. I, my issue with that is that, um, the mixed use is not an allowed use in our zoning. And I think it's problematic that a town entity is supporting a project that is not an allowed use.
I guess I don't disagree with that. I, I, my comment was, but it, and again, it goes back to my question. It, did it, did that in fact happen?
I, that's questionable. I, uh, some people spoke in favor of it and others said, you know, we like the building, but if it's not allowed in our zoning, then we're not in favor of it. So I don't think they had a campaign or anything.
Okay, um, so may, maybe it didn't happen. I don't know. I, I, do, do we know was there, did the, the EDC take a formal position on this? Again, I don't, I, it, it strikes me as, you know, i- i- if it happened, then having it in there is, is historically accurate. If it didn't happen, then it shouldn't be in there. So do we know? Is there a way to, is someone from the EDC know for sure?
I'm, I'm here. Yeah, I was involved with that. It, it's complicated. Um, we, you know, and there's, there's.
All right, then let's leave it out.
Think we need to get into, so.
That's all I needed to hear was it's complicated. All right, Mimi, was that it?
That's it. Thank you.
Okay.
Happy holidays.
All right, you too. Thanks. Um, I'm looking for hands. Um, Kristen's here. Ms. Leval?
Hi, yeah.
Go ahead. Yep.
Okay. Just very quickly, um, just speaking as a member of the public, um, I personally do like the renderings because I don't think we're going to gar- much, get much interest, quite frankly, unfortunately, from a town that doesn't always, you know, largely participate in politics with so much going on, um, that I, I think we may not be giving the public enough credit that to appreciate, as long as it's clearly labeled, that these are renderings and not, you know, not necessarily what will happen, that people can appreciate that. But I think it's, it's, it's necessary to put a little vision out there for, to get people engaged and involved and really thinking about this. Um, and then the other, only other thing I would add, and I, I admit I've not looked through everything, um, thoroughly. So, uh, if this is there, I apologize, Julie. But, you know, to the point that Ms. Braccio made about making sure that we're not ending up with some huge office building, like in someone's backyard, you know, what won't this zoning change allow might bring some, some um, additional detail to those renderings that make them acceptable. Now, I know I'm saying all this with, with the board clearly voicing an opinion that differs, but I do think we should give the public a little credit. And I do think without something to engage them like that, then we lose interest and we lose a public voice. And, and that's what we really need on this. Thank you. That's it.
All right, Sarah. Thanks, Kristen. And I'm looking through my attendee list, and I think that's it. All right, any other discussion by the board? All right. So it's moved and seconded that Ms. Braccio, we, we, you have our proxy. Uh, Ms. Braccio.
Will do. Thank you.
The aye.
Oh, aye. I'm sorry. I thought we already did that.
We voted. Yeah, we voted.
We voted, but Brian was, yeah, Brian wasn't there.
Mr. Shay is aye. Mr. Shay is aye.
Shay is aye. All right.
Okay.
My vote is late, but my vote is in.
Okay.
All right.
I'm, uh.
All right. So you have double the authority, Lisa.
All right, there we go. Thank you.
All right, uh, goal setting for town administrator. Item, uh, Roman numeral six B. Um, so, I mean, I'll give you my general thoughts about this and they, they, um, n- number one, we're talking about a relatively short window since we're talking about doing, um, uh, a, um, um, evaluation in February or March. Um, so, so the goals for a period that's short obviously would be relatively modest. For me, um, uh, I guess they are twofold. Number one, that I think Mark, quite frankly, you're already, um, you, you're already taking definite steps towards, um, uh, pursuing slash meeting this goal. And that is more fulsome, um, communication with the board across the board. Um, and my second thing is, and, um, the Board of Health, uh, um, process is a good example. Um, I, I go back to something I said, I think at our last meeting. I think the town administrator has more authority than, um, uh, you've taken. And I think that's a good example. I don't think anybody but the town administrator can ride herd on an issue like that and bring it to proper fruition on behalf of the town. So I would just, my, my second goal would be to, to embrace that authority that I think the town administrator has and whether it's in the Board of Health context and some other context that you, um, uh, can identify to, you, you know, take those reins and, and, um, uh, uh, you know, exert the authority that you have. Um, and then I will, Mr. Stivers, I know you reached out to me, so I'm going to start with you, that you have some thoughts on this as well.
Thanks, yeah. Um, I do agree that it's a challenge with a fairly short time window here, I guess. And I agree with, uh, your comments, Marty, about the area for focus. Um, I think the Board of Health is a critical one and Mark is clearly out in front of that one here. And I think that's going to be a useful thing to watch and track and consider as part of this process. Um, I mean, I think there are a long list of projects. I got a dozen or so out of my evaluation comments that are worthwhile projects. And, uh, one of the possibilities is to get Mark to suggest a couple of things that, uh, he thinks are appropriate for focus. But, uh, again, I would say Board of Health is number one on mine and, uh, also occurred to me that Personnel Board is one that Mark works closely with. And so maybe getting them to lay out a, a set of tasks or project over the near term, that could be something that they would feel is helpful and a good benchmark in terms of, uh, making progress in that dimension. Uh, another one that's come up recently is the, uh, coordination between the building inspector and the historical commission relative to demolition delay by law. That's again, a process kind of thing that, uh, requires people to work together. And, uh, again, we've had a couple of instances where, um, that doesn't seem to have worked, uh, as smoothly as it might have. So getting a hold of that one could be a fairly short term process as well. So, um, and there, you know, some little things like we've been, uh, dancing around the sidewalk access to the public safety building, for example, for a while. So, you know, something like that one could lay out and sort of check off if we can figure out a way to get that done effectively as well. So to me, combination of, of smaller projects, larger projects could give us a set of choices that, uh, again, I would look to Mark to determine, you know, what does he think makes sense in terms of some near term things where he can get traction and demonstrate progress. Uh, I have a useful input here. So. If you want more projects, I got a list, but those are the ones that come to the top of the list for me.
All right, Ms. Braccio.
Right. Sorry, I couldn't unmute. Um, so I, and I, I appreciate the short window and I, I think there's a lot going on right now. Um, one of the things that I would like to see is, um, and, and Mark, maybe this has happened and I just haven't seen them, are formal reviews for, um, other contracted employees. And, um, if they haven't been done, I'd, I'd like to see them. I mean, we all benefit from knowing, you know, kind of what everyone thinks and, 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 um, things we could do or what the town is looking to do differently than we may be doing now. Um, so again, I, I don't know where that stands as far as, as the employees, whether they're up to date, then, then that's great. You know, that was just one of the things, um, I had. And also, um, for those employees, department heads that fall under you, um, I would just like to see you consider some goals if you haven't already for them as well. And even for, for contracted employees as well, um, that, that fall under you. So that's it for me. Thank you.
Uh, Chelsea.
Well, I have, um, three. Um, and Lisa just touched on my first one, which is reviews and goals for contracted employees. And I'll just take it a step further, further to, um, add a timeline for when each contract employee is reviewed. Um, and then tying the review back to the goals that were set. Um, and also highlighting any goals that are related to the selectmen goals for the year. Um, and and obviously like any, anyone that hasn't been reviewed in the last 18 months, um, get them reviewed by February, March. Um, my second one is obviously Mark's review was delayed because of COVID, um, reasons. So are, is, you know, Mark, if you could go back and see if there's anything else, else that's outstanding over the last 18 months that got delayed because of COVID, that you can bring to the board and say, do you want to deal with this now? Or do you want to, you know, keep it on our list to deal with when, when we can kind of get back to in-person, um, things, just so the board can kind of make the decision and you don't have to make the decision whether you're going to push something off or not.
So you, you don't necess- I'm sorry, just interrupt. You don't necessarily mean me related. You just, any other, any issue that may have fallen off the front burner with their, okay, got it.
Yeah, not you related. I think that was the only one I knew of with you, but no.
We've been here three and a half hours. I don't know if we want to drag that out further, but okay, yeah.
Yeah. Uh, and my third one kind of touches on what Sam did, but I think it's more broad. Um, and it's working collaboratively with department heads and other elected boards in ways to improve town service and reduce costs. And I think, um, kind of going into this budget season, we, and, and I know we haven't talked about the budget here, but I think following some of the advisory conversations, we start off the budget season every year with like, oh, we have a lot of work to do. Um, and, you know, I think there's short-term and long-term goals with this one, Mark. And, um, the short-term, I think Board of Health falls under kind of the leadership role that you're taking with that one. Um, but there's some other areas that I think we could have some short-term and long-term, and I'm happy to work with you on those as well. Um, but I think something that over the last two or three months that I think has worked well is I think Karen Galligan's done a nice job that's forward to us and having us kind of jump on it. Here's a grant opportunity. Do you want me to pursue it? And, and so I'd like to see, Mark, you work with your department heads like you have with Karen, to bring some of those things forward. Um, and kind of, you know, how can we collaborate together to, um, be more efficient and effective, um, for the residents? So those are my three.
Uh, Mr. Shay.
So I agree with, um, that everything's been posed to date. Again, I think we're in a situation too, where we need to keep this manageable for a review that's going to happen in February and March as well. And to try and come up with two uh, expansive list right now is just going to set Mark up for failure in February, March. We need to be, we need to be fair about that. But that said, I think that the goals really ought to be a mutual thing. So what I would like to see is to have Mark, you know, be prepared for February, March timeframe, to think about some long-term goals that he would like to implement as well, and present those to us, and have us, you know, work collaboratively, cooperatively on those, see how those blend with board goals that have been established, and, you know, have us weigh in on, on, you know, on the importance of those as well. But, so I guess, my goal would be, you know, identify long-term goals to, that you can present in February, March to, to work towards over, like, a year, 18-month period or so.
And, and Mark, along that same vein, here is, here is my thought about one way that you might approach this, because it's been a mouthful. Actually, it's been five mouthfuls. And, and I know Mr. Stivers hates my little goals chart.
I love it. It's, we need to update it more frequently. On the chart.
But, but again, there were a number of things that, that were, all of the things that were just talked about, there's no way in hell you're going to be able to accomplish all of those things by February or March, or even next February or March. But whatever the num, whatever the number of items were, whether it's nine, or 11, or 12, you know, I would jot them down and update us as much as you want, that, you know, I'm, I'm moving in this direct, you know, on, on, on the, you know, the, the, the things that are delayed with COVID, you know, that's in process. There's a survey that's been done, or, you know, just to be able to, you're not going to be able to accomplish all of them, but it'd be nice if there were a way, a data point that you could point and say, this is in progress. I just think that'll, that, that, that puts it into more digestible bits for you to communicate with us. That's just a suggestion. If you don't think it makes sense, don't do it.
No, I, I, like I said, I would like to, I, I kind of assumed that, you know, we weren't going to sit here and narrow things down to two or three goals, so, because that's really not the way, you know, this, this board works. But I, I do agree that, you know, you know, the intention is for some of these issues, some of these issues are, you know, doable over the next 60 to 90 days, absolutely. Some of them, I think, you know, you know, you, as you just said, Marty, you know, you know, put them in the chart and, and show progress, show how things are moving towards them. And, and I really think that that, in and of itself, is, is probably, you know, a, a good measuring stick, you know, because there are things that can be completed on here. The one thing, and, you know, I know we've talked about this, that, you know, and, and I'm not picking on Sam because he put four things down, but, you know, the sidewalk access to the public safety facility, this is a little bit of a red herring, Sam. You know, this was, this was an issue that was, that was talked about, you know, at, at the, you know, with the public safety project. It wasn't something that's required, and I understand the argument of, you know, whether we should do it or have to do it, you know, it, it might, maybe it's the right thing to do. You know, we do have a Title II access and transition plan that's being done for us by CMRPC. That's going to, the awards will come out from the state in December. Work will start in January. Work will be completed in June, and that's going to be one of the issues, is, you know, they need to take a look at this. Is this something that, that should be done? If it is, we'll put it in the transition plan. If it's something that, you know, that, that should be funded, the transition plan is going to be worked on between the ADA Committee and the Capital Committee to put it into the, to put it into the chain where it's going to get funded. So, you know, so, so that one, I think, is probably more of a longer-term piece, because I think some things need to get done before that comes to, you know.
Mark, that, that's why I said, you know, here's my list, pick what you think makes sense there. And so I think along Marty's comment line, I think that kind of update satisfies me at this point, and let's move on. So I'm not saying that absolutely, you know, I expect all these things are going to be done, because I think, again, you ought to tell us what you think you can bite off and chew during this period of time.
I'm just going to put that in my update. Sam is satisfied. So I think, I think that, I think gets the gold star.
That said, as long as, you know, as, and Sam just said, you know, pick what you think is important and go with it, you can't judge him on the things that he didn't run with, you know, and you can't, you know, go, mark against him, because, you know, in the short time that we have, certainly, certain things didn't get done.
Well, you know, and again, and I don't want it to be, well, you know, you know, I did two of Chelsea's, but I only did one of Sam's. Sam had four items, and, you know, so I, and, and the one thing that, you know, that I'm going to put in here as well, that, that you didn't mention, I had a list, you hit a lot of the things that I had, and, and again, I think employee handbook and policy book are very important. I know that those have already ended up on the selectmen's list. It doesn't mean that they can't, you know, be part of mine. I know that I've already offered assistance with regards to employee handbook. I don't think it's, we, we need to re, to, you know, completely redo. I just think we need to find people that have good employee handbooks and make them our own, and, and make some tweaks to that. But the other piece I do want to put in is a reorganization plan for the selectmen's office. You know, we have begun that process this week. We've moved Ms. Barry up into the selectmen's office. She didn't run away today, so I think it was, it was good that she's getting integrated. I think she's going to be a great addition. I really would like to see sometime over the next 30 to 45 days, there be a ZBA case, so I can see how that works while with everything else in the office. But then I want to be able to present a plan to the board that talks about, you know, revised job description for, for Ms. Esposito, revised job description for Ms. Hale, and what this new position could look like if you want it simply to serve our office, or if we want to broaden the benefit of the position to include other offices and, and to continue to provide some services to, you know, to some of those departments that don't have admin. At the end of the day, you know, it may be that we're at least going to assimilate a 19-hour position into this position. So, you know, there, there is inherently going to be a savings, I think, in whatever comes forward. So I, that's one other piece, you know, I have 11 on my list, but I'd like to add that 12th one, because I do think that's important, and that's something that we do need to do.
My, my muted, Mark, that was going to be my, another overall comment. You should not be constrained by our thoughts.
Yeah.
For instance, the Board of Health, actually, that's something you would already, you know, you would grab the bull by the horns on that, you know, we're saying yes, but, but, you know, you should add your own goals in there, and honestly, if they're better than ours, and that's what you're pursuing, instead of, you know, the, what did you say was 14 things Sam raised? What was it?
I have a personal list.
Anyway, so do, do not feel constrained by our list.
Yeah.
You know, have your, have your other goals and let us know what you're doing.
Exactly.
I will, I will add, I will add some other things onto the list. I'll create a chart, and we will have it in the, have it in the front of the agenda packets, nicely behind yours, but with the selectmen's list and that, so we can keep track of these things.
What I'm looking for, Mark, is basically progress, and there, there are so many things that need to be done. I think you've got wide latitude in defining, you know, how to demonstrate that progress, and I care less about the specifics than simple, clear demonstration of forward progress. There's, almost anything you do is going to be helpful off of this list, so I think that's what I'd, I'd be looking for over the next 60 days or so.
Sure.
All right, Roman numeral six C. I move that we designate Chelsea Malinowski Board Liaison for the finance team.
Second.
Discussion. None allowed. Ms. Braccio.
Double I.
Ms. Malinowski.
I.
Enthusiasm. Mr. Shea.
Aye.
Mr. Stivers.
Aye.
Before I say aye, Chelsea, you knew this was coming, right?
Yes.
Okay.
I, I mean, I kind of volunteered, right?
Right.
Yes.
Mr. Healy is aye, it's unanimous. Godspeed, Chelsea.
Thank you. The finance team will be running tomorrow, the other way.
With your kids? Finance team on the left, my three kids to the right. Ready, go.
Either we do what she wants, or she leaves the kids behind with us.
All right. Draft zoning bylaw. Are we going to have much discussion about this? Ms. Braccio says yes.
Well, yes, in the respect that, so, a lot of pieces came together on this late in the game. We didn't get Attorney Pasta's comments until early Sunday morning, which didn't make it to the board until Monday. So here's the concern that I have in approving this tonight. So I went back through, I, I looked through the document, and I found inconsistencies in the consensus that we had reached, and some of them, I think, are pretty important. I'll just toss one out there right off the bat, is under the floor area ratio, Judy had put down a minimum of .45 by right and up to a maximum of 70. That, that wasn't the discussion. I've gone back and I actually watched the four-hour meeting as well, and the discussion on that was .35 over and up to .50 by special permit. So I think there's a few other inconsistencies I found in here as well. So Adam had given comments based on, on Judy's comments, which, again, has inconsistencies, and then EDC met on Friday and took a vote to make some changes as well. So, yeah. So between the three things, I honestly, I, I've spent a lot of time poring over this, Marty. I'm not comfortable moving this forward tonight for a vote, because it's an incomplete document in my mind. And again, I know we're on a tight timeframe, but we never run a rush, in my mind, without doing the right due diligence. So my suggestion to the board would be, I will get answers on some of these, these issues. I, I'm not comfortable with putting this to Planning Board now, because I think with the FAR alone, we're going to have issues. You know, that, that's a big difference. We had a lot of discussion on that. That was our first topic that we discussed. So what, what I would suggest is, the opportunity, and, and I can certainly work with Julie on this, that's fine, to, you know, go back and go through some of these changes, and, and first get the document that we had all agreed on. I mean, we spent a lot of time getting the consensus, you know, to move this forward. Getting back to that document, having Adam relook at it, I don't think it's going to be a major overhaul for him to do that. It's only a couple areas that he hasn't commented, or that he may have already commented on, and then, you know, have a discussion with EDC on their changes as well, to bring back a document to the board at our first meeting in January, hopefully completed.
Yeah, I'm not even, I'm not even sure if I've seen the EDC stuff.
You didn't. I actually, Julie had sent it to me, and I didn't open it till yesterday, and my mistake, I thought I forwarded it to Mark for the board, and I didn't. So I will forward that to him tonight.
Yeah, this is an easy call, then. I mean, you know, you have done a terrific job, you know, coordinating a number of, you know, moving pieces and, and, you know, difficult schedules and things like that, and, and, you know, very simply, if you're not comfortable, I'm not comfortable.
Yeah.
So, does anyone just, yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead, Sam.
Comment, I would comment that I actually like a lot of what Adam Costa recommended there. I thought there were a number of inconsistencies. Those comments made it hang together a lot better. I think a number of Judy's comments were very helpful as well, but I do agree with Lisa. I found some things that I didn't remember we had agreed to here, and so I think it's worth having another pass at it to do a little more, find.
Which, what are we, January 5th? What's, what's our next meeting, Mark?
Fourth, I think, isn't it? Maybe, I can't remember.
Whatever the Tuesday is, the first Tuesday, yeah.
And I don't think, Marty, I don't, I don't think it's going to take a ton of work to, to, to get this fixed. So, you know, I'll, I'll talk to Julie, you know, we can find a time to sit down and just have a brief discussion, and hopefully we can get something to the board, you know, soon enough that you'll have time to review it. So when we actually meet in January at the first meeting, we can address any questions, and we can move forward from there.
Yeah, and again.
District name.
Yeah.
I'm sorry?
I do like the town center district name.
Brian or Chelsea, do you disagree with what's been said? No?
No, completely agree.
Okay. So I will move to, well, I guess we don't have to do anything. We'll just, no action on it tonight, and we'll put it on the, the first meeting in January agenda.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
All right, it is, we've got a, we've got to go into executive session. For six E, do we, do we want to do the same thing and just kick it over to the first meeting in January? I see a lot of heads nodding.
Second.
All right. The one thing I would say, Mark, is, and I don't think, number one, there's going to be a lot of meetings between now and January, but I think it would be appropriate to send out to all of the, just an email to all of the chairs of the, of our boards and committees, just saying that we are going to be taking a, a look at the existing code of conduct at our meeting in January, and just reaffirm to them that they should be mindful of it, notwithstanding the, the, the remote atmos, you know, the remote environment we find ourselves in. And I get, you know, it's, it's, honestly, it is, I think yesterday I had six Zoom or WebEx calls, and I was goofy at the end of the day, and, you know, I think I was saying stuff that made sense, but if I had started, you know, so I get it that it's, that, that there could be a laxity and, and informality that can creep in, but these are public meetings. So just craft an email and gently let the chairs of the committees know that, that, that it's still important.
Yeah, I will do that.
Okay. Six F. I move that we close the warrant for the March 20th. Ha, 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 ha. March 20th, 2021 annual town meeting.
Second, ha, ha.
Is there a discussion about it? I mean, it seemed, Mark, I like the way that the, the color coding was done, made it easy to follow. What was, what was, what was, what is it? Something old, something new, something borrowed, something blue?
Yeah.
I'm getting goo, I'm getting goofy now.
Yeah, there were, there were, I, I was contacted by Ms. Gillespie for a couple of CPC items, but you'll notice that I put an, an article in there for CPC items to be determined. There's always a catch-all, because they never quite have a sense of what they're doing. She sent me three more potential articles for, for CPC. One is the townhouse improvements, and two others I cannot, one of them, yeah, no, I'm not going to get them. I think one of them actually is a study of the Flag Road School, and then there was maybe something for trails. And so those are potentially things CPC is working on, and we'll see if those come to fruition. If they do, then that means you're going to have 44 articles.
And we're fine doing it the way you did with, with a one to-be-determined article, and that can cover more than one?
That's how I've done it in the past, is just to cover an omnibus for whatever other articles that they tend to bring forward. We covered their admin, we covered the, the church and Calander, which were the two that were kicked forward, as well as the debt payments for Burnett and for the library.
Okay. So. Are folks, are folks comfortable with where we are?
I have one question.
Yep, Chelsea.
All right. So Historical had brought up some potential changes to the demolition bylaw, delay by, demolition delay bylaw, and I think the way I had read it was that it would need to go through town meeting to get approved. Mark, do you know if they are pursuing that for this town meeting?
So I don't have anything formal from them, Chelsea. I am happy to put a placeholder in.
Okay.
So that, you know, so the way that this works is, when you close the warrant tonight, you'll have articles and placeholders, so you know what the universe of the warrant could be. Some of these articles, some of these placeholders grow up to be articles, and some of them just don't get there. Okay? If they don't get there, they drop off the warrant, so when you approve the final warrant, they're not there. If you don't add this, and you say in February, you know what, I really think we want to put this in, the board has to vote to reopen the warrant, and at that point, any articles that may be sitting there waiting, they can come in too.
Got it.
My point is, if you want to put a placeholder in, let's put a placeholder in now, and if something comes of it, great, and if it doesn't, then it doesn't show up on the final version.
Okay.
So I'll, I'll add that in.
Thank you. So then I have a process. Sorry, oh, sorry. I just have a follow-up question, Mark. So the ones in green that came over from last town meeting, right, those are the green ones? They, do they have to go to town meeting, or could they get?
They, do they have to go to town meeting or can they get pulled and then just never make it on the warrant? Like, how does that work? Is it what they were?
Those better make it there into the warrant or I'm going to be drawn and cornered.
That they would be on.
So I'm sorry, I didn't mean that we would decide they didn't make it on. I meant if the opponent didn't want to pursue it going to town meeting, could, would they pull it? Or no?
I don't, a citizen petition one, I think, has to go in if the, all the signatures are certified, right? Because all the.
Yeah, I really, I really think it'd probably be in the board's best interest to carry them all the town meeting. And if somebody wants to not, you know, if somebody doesn't want to deal with it and that, they simply, the, the, the sponsor gets up and asks for it to be passed over.
Okay.
I, I just think that's cleaner than, you know, Mr. Moderator, there was an article on here for banning plastic. What happened to that article? I was ready to speak to that today. Where, where is it?
Okay.
All right, Mark. So the, so what we are considering now is 41 articles with the additional placeholder for Historical.
Uh, no, you've got, so I sent you out a new warrant this afternoon based on, or a new warrant with the additional citizen petition that was put in there for Flag Road. And there was also an article that Mr. Hegarty had, had inserted a placeholder. When he made the change for the locations that the warrant had to be posted, there was never similar changes made to distribution for the annual report. And, and he wanted to make that change in order for consistency. So there was, there was a new warrant that I sent out to you this afternoon.
It's 42.
Forty two, correct.
All right. So we're at 43 then?
Forty three, correct.
Okay. So I think I made the motion, if I did not make it again, to approve the 43 article, to close the 43 article warrant.
Second.
Sorry, I have another question. So Shopsey's been in discussions about moving CPC funds for housing. And we were kind of going back and forth, kind of on the best way to do it and to have a plan, et cetera. So, Mark, as part of what you have outlined for CPC, would that cover moving money for housing or does that have to be a separate CPC article?
No, if it was, it would fall under that omnibus article at this point. So if you wanted to, if you wanted to do something like that. I thought, I thought that that was resolved that they weren't going to seek money at this point.
So I think that it's going to be a timing if, if we come up with a plan and and we say, you know, in January, we have something that we want to purchase. And I'm not saying that we do at this moment. I'm just saying if there was, would we have a mechanism to execute prior to town meeting?
Well, I, I think that would fall probably if you'd come up with something in January, that's going to really put you under, under the wheel with, with CPC because they've already finished their work. So I, I think it becomes more difficult in January. So, but yes, it would, it would fall under that piece.
But it would, so, but we also have the funds that have already been appropriated at town meeting that we would have to go to them to transfer. So if it was part of that package, then it'd probably be one discussion with CPC.
Sure. Yep. No, that's fine. Yes. So it's, it's yes to both of your things.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So any more discussion for the motion to close the 43 article warrant? Ms. Braccio.
Aye.
Ms. Malinowski.
Aye.
I didn't like that delay. Mr. Shea.
Aye.
Mr. Stivers.
Aye.
Mr. Healy is aye. The warrant is closed. And I looked quickly while we were talking and I didn't see any hands raised for public comment, but I'll give one final opportunity. And seeing none. The board will be entering into executive session per Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21, and not returning to open session for the following matters: To discuss the value of real property exemption three as it relates to tax foreclosure proceedings for 44 Bigelow Road and to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law exemption, exemption seven to review and approve the executive session minutes of November 17th, 2020. So moved.
Second.
Second.
Discussion, none. Ms. Braccio.
Aye.
Ms. Malinowski.
Aye.
Mr. Shea.
Aye.
Mr. Stivers.
Aye.
Mr. Healy is aye. We are adjourned from open session and we are going.